Good evening, everyone. We are going to get started. I will call the public session to order at 6:41. We apologize for the delay in getting started. But Mr. Watson, did you have anything you wanted to say here at the start of the meeting? Mr. Watson?
I am here.
Anything you wanted to say here at the start of the meeting?
I just wanted to let folks know that Mr. Trunki, our board clerk, will be presiding on my behalf as I am attending virtually.
Thank you very much. So we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would ask all of our Superstar Reader Award winners to stand up first. And we're going to have you guys lead everybody else in the Pledge of Allegiance. So do you guys know how to do that? Ask everybody to stand up and then get started.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next, we have one item to report out of closed session. On a motion by Mr. Watson and a second by Mrs. Garibay, the board voted to approve claim number 23-24, number 16, in the amount of $20,000. The yes votes were five, no nays, no abstentions. The motion passed. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for November 19th. And I believe we need to make one change on item 7A, which needs to be pulled.
Move to approve the agenda minus item 17A.
7A.
7A, sorry.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Cooper and a second by Mrs. Garibay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with a five to zero vote. Next is approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of the governing board for October 29th, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Cooper, second by Mrs. Garibay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with a five to zero vote. And we have approve minutes from the joint meeting of the governing board and the Asset Management Advisory Committee for October 30th, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Watson.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Garibay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with a five to zero vote. Onto the hearing session. First up is recognition of our Superstar Reader Awards.
Okay, good evening, everybody. We're excited to recognize our superstar readers. We might have two people joining us online. So if you're online, if you could use the raise your hand feature, and we'll pull you up so we can see you on the screen. We've got somebody from Cedar Creek possibly and maybe Sky Blue Mesa, unless you are here and you made it in. So while we see if they're with us online, I'm excited to present this award. First grade happened to me, I think my favorite grade that I taught. And I remember this time of the year always wanting to, you know, think, my goodness. It's really hard teaching kids how to read. But then Christmas break would happen, the lights would start coming on, and you would see all this change, right? And at the end of the year, it was a big reward. So I love seeing a couple of kindergartners and a couple of first graders on the list today. But we've got every grade represented. And with that... I don't see anybody yet. So once again, if you're in the online audience and you use that raise your hand feature, we'll pull you in. But otherwise, we'll get started. All right, so our superstar... Oh, yeah, sorry. If you are holding an award and you're going to get one tonight, will you bring your award up and stand right up here? Come, all stand together and you can... Award, right in front. Perfect. Got so excited, I got ahead of myself. All right, so we're going to read your names off in your school. And if you could just step forward a little bit or you could give us a little wave or something so everybody can acknowledge you as we read your names, we're going to recognize you for being an awesome reader. All right, let's give them a big round of applause. And we're going to ask you guys to stay up here with us while our board members can say a few words about you. So just hang on a little while longer up here with us.
Thank you. We'll start with Ms. Cooper.
Thank you. So just show of hands, how many of you have stayed up till 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning? Because you just couldn't put that book down?
You should be asleep.
It's okay, Mom and Dad, once in a while.
The first book I did that with was Heidi. But reading, just, it takes you away. It's an escape. But it also, the more you read, the more ideas you can have. And the more ideas you can have from reading, the more ideas you come up with on your own. So congratulations and keep up the good reading.
Mrs. Garibay?
Thank you. Congratulations, superstar readers. Obviously, reading is one of the most fundamental, most important things that you do as a child, as you're learning. And it helps you in everything else that you do. So you guys are already ahead of the curve. Continue doing the good work that you're doing and reading and encouraging your friends to read and go to the library and get books because it really opens up your world to a lot of possibilities. So congratulations, guys.
Mrs. Grease?
Hi, everyone. Congratulations to the superstar readers. Thank you to the parents and to our teachers, working hard to get them to this point. So thank you.
Mr. Watson?
Hi there. Congratulations to all of you. Really proud of everything that you're achieving with your reading and just want to encourage you to keep at it. As Mrs. Garibay said, it opens up a world of possibilities in any direction you want to go. Very, very proud of you. Good job.
I will add my congratulations to all of you for this great reading award. Congratulations to your parents for fostering such a great environment for you guys to read in. And thank you to our teachers. And please continue showing all of your classmates how fun it is to read so that they can enjoy it as much as you do. Thank you. So next, we will have some pictures. So if you could all scrunch together just a little bit more. All right, thank you very much. You can sit down now, join your families. And next, we have some recognitions for America's Healthiest Schools. If all of you could just hang on for a moment. After this next presentation, we will take a little bit of a break. Dr. Hawkins? Mrs. Berry?
Thank you. I am really excited tonight to be able to present this award to our schools. Last time we met, we received the Kaiser Grant Award, which is always such a great partnership. And she stole a little bit of what I was going to say tonight. But I did want to reiterate that America's Healthiest Schools is an award that we are invited to apply for every year. There are a total of nine topic areas, all in student wellness, safety, health, physical health, and nutrition. And this year, there were 879 schools across America that applied for this award. And we had 15 of our schools awarded in at least nine areas. That's huge.
Huge.
The other thing that I'll share before we hand out the awards is that 14 of our schools were All-Star Awards, meaning we were awarded nine out of nine topic areas. And only 66 out of the 879 schools across America got the All-Star Award. So that is a huge, huge deal. Another round of applause, please. It's not easy this year. And in the past, Ms. Ford has helped lead that charge. And this year, I attempted to help schools with a very lengthy application process. And not only did they have to apply this year, but they had to upload the evidence. They were actually performing and how they implemented those areas. So it is a lengthy process. But it's really doing the work that the teachers are already doing, the nurses are already doing, classified staff are already doing, our admin are already doing. And so we're just, it's nice to get the credit for the things that we're already doing that we know are good for our students and our families. Our goal this year, just so you know, was to have every school get awarded in at least two areas. And we surpassed our goal. I haven't said it yet, but I would love next year for all of our schools to be All-Star Awards. We got invited to Arkansas this year, and the award ceremony was at the Clinton Libraries. And they make a really big deal about it. They invite the schools. And so it's a really special event. So I'm very excited to be able to give the plaques and officially honor our schools. Board members, if you could stand up front, I will announce the schools and we will share their plaques. Principals and anybody who's here to represent the school, if you just, once you get your plaques, just stay up front because we will have some pictures taken. So without further ado, Bridgeport is an All-Star Award winner. And this is their third year being an All-Star Award winner. Cedar Creek is also an All-Star Award winner. It is also their third year. Emblem Academy, All-Star Award winner, second year in a row. James Foster, also All-Star, second year in a row. And I, as you know, our schools are a little competitive. Charles Helmer's first-year All-Star Award winner. Congratulations. Highlands recognized in eight of nine areas. Mountain View, All-Star Award winner, second year in a row. North Park recognized in eight out of nine areas this year. Plum Canyon, All-Star Award winner, second year in a row. Real Vista, first-time All-Star Award winner. Rosedale, second-year All-Star Award winner. Santa Clarita, second-year All-Star Award winner. Sky Blue Mesa, first-time All-Star Award winner. Tesoro, first-year All-Star Award winner. And West Creek, All-Star Award winner, third year. Congratulations, everybody. Congratulations on the hard work to achieve all of this. We would like all of you to squish for a picture.
Three rows will be in the back.
And with that, we will take a quick five-minute recess. You all can take more pictures if you want, and we'll be back 7:06. All right, we are back in session at 7:06. And next on the agenda, advanced written request to address the board regarding agenda and non-agenda items. Board bylaws 9320, 9322, and 9323 each speak to the process used by the governing board to allow for public comment during its meetings. The bylaws are in compliance with the Brown Act and other applicable law. Board bylaw 9323 specifically outlines the process for members of the public to address the governing board on agenda and non-agenda items that are within its subject matter jurisdiction. Members of the public wishing to address the governing board are asked to do the following prior to the start of the public comment section of the meeting agenda to ensure that appropriate time is allotted to all interested speakers and topics. The speaker must either complete a speaker card for each item they desire to speak on and/or notify the assistant superintendent of each item if attending the meeting in person. This notification is requested to allow the board president to consistently implement public comment guidelines provided in board bylaw 9323. Members of the public wishing to make public comment via telephone or virtual meeting software must notify the assistant to the superintendent via email, not later than 4:30 on the day of the scheduled meeting to ensure that the person has the same opportunity to address the board under board bylaw 9323 as those who are in attendance. Each speaker is allowed three minutes per topic for public comment. The total time allotted for each topic is 20 minutes. Depending upon the number of persons wishing to be heard on a single topic, the governing board may adjust the time allotted for each speaker or the total time allotted to the topic issue. The president of the board may take a poll of speakers for and against the topic or issue to determine how best to allot time on each topic or issue. Members of the public who wish to address the board do so either in person or via Zoom. A speaker may read a statement from an individual not in attendance. However, their allotted speaking time will not be extended to read such a statement. A timer visible to all attendees will be used to manage time during public comment. Any speaker who exceeds their allotted time will have their mic cut off. To ensure that non-English speakers receive the same opportunity to directly address the board, any member of the public who utilizes a translator shall be provided at least twice the allotted time to address the board unless simultaneous translation equipment is used to allow the board to hear the translated public testimony simultaneously. Please remember that state law prevents the board from acting on any matter not listed on the agenda or from discussing any such matter in detail. And we will start first with a group of speakers whose topic is the last meeting, which was the joint meeting between the governing board and the Asset Management Committee. We will first hear from Karen Helene, then Karen Frost, and then Kathy Lund, in that order.
Is this on? Okay. This is actually in regards to the last board meeting, not the assessment meeting. But good evening to all of you and Matt and Anna as well. When we look around this room, we see adults that have gathered here for a business meeting. We are parents, teachers, administrators, and this board collectively for the purpose of the district business at hand. Last meeting, while many were absent from this room, yet active on the district Zoom, witnessed a very uncomfortable conversation. There were accusation and words. Mr. Trunki, your words to Mrs. Grease, they were harsh. They were mean-spirited and actually said a lot about your character that night. You would have never have said this to any of the other board members, which shows me you zero out dissension to Mrs. Grease. If you knew that Mrs. Cooper, Mrs. Garibay, or Matt Watson requested a change of date to a meeting that was set last December, you would have not challenged the request. You already were aware of prior to the meeting starting that night. We, as an audience, we were uncomfortable. We, as an audience, we were uncomfortable. It was horrible. We continue to see a rudeness exchange from this dais and from the staff, but I'm only seeing it towards Mrs. Grease. She represents my school, so I'm here speaking as a parent, as a grandparent of kids from North Park who she represents. Maybe it's time for all of us to remember the words and the motto that this district stands for: respect, integrity, learning, teamwork, and how about enthusiasm? Now that the campaign season is over, you all know who you'll be working with. Can we please work together? Catherine, I'm congratulating you. You were not lucky to come. You were re-elected, and congratulations to you. Thank you.
And next, Karen Frost.
Good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity to address you, and I just wanted to comment on something similar to Mrs. Helene. I was watching the meeting online last month, and I too was very uncomfortable at the exchange at the very end. And, Mr. Trunkie, I know that you did not mention anybody's names specifically, but I've been coming to these board meetings long enough that I've seen the level of acrimony, and it's not productive. And it would have, if, it can't be considered an isolated incident because I know that Mrs. Grease is doing what her constituents have asked her to do. She's the one that says, "Hold on, I've got a question. Hold on, I've got some, I need some more information." And when she does what her constituents are asking her to do, she's attacked and she's vilified, and it's not productive, and I don't like seeing it, and it's not helpful to this board in moving forward. She's the only one that says, "Wait a minute, I got a question about Measure N, where we put a ballot measure onto the ballot and we spent $350,000 and it didn't pass. We need to start asking questions, and we need to start working together, and we need to stop attacking each other, and it's not productive and it's not appreciated by the constituents, so please do better. Thank you."
Next, we'll hear from Kathy Lund, followed by Lynn Unklis and Laurel Castagna.
Hi. Tonight, I want to address the board concerning the future of Santa Clarita Elementary's remaining structures and the grounds. I live up Seco Canyon from the school, so I've been driving by it almost every time I leave my house for about 40 years, and subconsciously, I've always checked on it when I go by. Recently, I have to say, it's been especially tough to see the school being systematically dismantled, starting with selling off the portable buildings along the concrete aqueduct at the back of the campus. Over the past couple of weeks, SUSD crews have been working day, night, Saturday, to board up the windows on the permanent buildings. Despite painting the plywood so it's not as obvious from the street, it still makes the school look abandoned rather than recently vacated, and it's a discouraging reminder of the former school's precarious fate. On a happier note, I wanted to thank the Board of Trustees for their attendance and participation at the October 30th meeting of the 711 or Assets Management Advisory Committee. I'm one of the nine volunteers selected to serve on the committee. Initially, we were informed that the public feedback would typically come after the 711 recommendations were sent to the board. However, our committee's meeting on September 18th at the school brought to light that the public wanted clarification and had strong feelings about what should happen at the school site next. It would have been understandable to shut down the entire process, but it took real leadership to turn a potential negative into a positive. Rescheduling and reformatting the October meeting was a smart move. So for me personally, not the committee, many thanks to the nearly 150 people who came to the community input meeting at Bridgeport that evening. While the discussion was spirited and passionate, I also felt it was quite respectful and productive. I was surprised and impressed by the wide range of suggested alternative uses for the SE property. Some people have really been giving this matter a lot of thought and had some unique ideas for repurposing the campus. You've given me, and I think the rest of the 711 committee members, food for thought. Huge thanks to Shelley Gibson and Pam Dahl for prepping the meeting in advance, and again, thanks to Shelley Gibson for compiling nearly 450 responses into a format that will assist our committee when we again meet on December 11th to review the suggestions and begin our discussions. Finally, tremendous thanks to Mr. Shea, 711 committee chair, Mr. Watson, president of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Hawkins, and Mr. Heinlein for making the challenging call to host a joint meeting and proactively take public input earlier in the recommendation process. It makes me feel inspired and cautiously optimistic that as a committee and a community, we can devise innovative and grounded proposals for the Santa Clarita Elementary campus so that in some way, it will continue to serve the Saugus area for many years to come. These are small things, but I'm grateful for them. Happy Thanksgiving.
Ms. Unklis.
Somebody ahead of me?
No.
My apologies. Good evening. Lynn Unklis here, and I want to register my extreme pleasure that Measure N failed, right? To indebted us for over $400 million? You gotta be kidding me, okay? The underhanded method in which you, Dr. Hawkins, got this onto the ballot is absolutely reprehensible. You should be booted from your position for this. You seem to have forgotten the employer-employee relationship here. We are your employers. That means you do as we say. We decide. You do not have a say independent of we, the people. That's how it works here, and there's no negotiation. So, and then spending $350,000 to get this on the ballot? What's wrong with you people? You cannot manage your finances? And then you had to turn around and ask for more? And then turn around and try to do an underhanded trick to try to get it on the ballot? And then you changed the wording around and all that kind of stuff so that we're not any of the wiser? Seriously? What a way to breed distrust in all of you with the lone exception of Anna Grease, the one rational member of this board. One, you people are disgusting, and we are not going to forget it. You try something like this again? Or better yet, I'm sure you're gonna try it again. We're gonna have our say. You're not gonna like what happens. We are not happy. We are the ones that have to pay for your financial mismanagement. It is absolutely unacceptable under any and all possible definition. So, we're telling you right now, you're gonna stop it. If this is a representative form of government, you're going to represent us. We do not work for you, you work for us. We decide. Take it to heart, otherwise, it's gonna be voluntary or involuntary. One way or another, you'll do what we say, or you're out like yesterday's trash. Be warned, be very warned. Thank you.
Laurel Castagna.
Good evening. I would like to speak in support of Mrs. Grease with regard to the certain item from the last board meeting. I took Mr. Trunkie up on the offer to listen to what was said regarding rescheduling Ms. Hawkins' mid-year evaluation, and although not said directly, it was inferred that Ms. Grease was in some way not fulfilling her board responsibilities by asking to reschedule the meeting. While it is important and necessary to move personal obligations in order to fill certain responsibilities as an elected board member, there are times in life where things come up after initial schedule is established, and requesting a change of date once in a while should not be considered shirking a responsibility. I respect that Mrs. Grease spoke up and was forthcoming about being one who needed to reschedule the meeting. It was also disclosed that someone else also needed to reschedule, but that person, as of yet, has not had the courage to speak up. I have been attending and listening to board meetings for several years now, and I've observed that Mrs. Grease is the only board member who is transparent, asks important questions, and stands up for her constituents. On another note, I want to bring up my disappointment with the decision to spend so much of the district's resources on pushing for Measure N, over $300,000, I believe, that was put last minute on the ballot for voting during this recent election. I attended the meeting where the consultants advised that the measure would probably not be popular due to surveys completed by likely voters and would probably not pass. The voters came out on November 5th, and the measure did not pass. So not heeding their recommendation wasted valuable resources that could have been used to help our students. This district needs to be held fiscally responsible for these actions. I hope that in the future, you will all work together and have our children's best interests at heart, and stop wasting money desperately needed to go towards our students' learning. Thank you.
Next, on the topic of special education, we will hear from Michelle Joseph, followed by Tim Ben Boystein on the state of education in Saugus.
May I make a request before I begin? I respectfully request that all board members put down any devices that you may have and focus your attention on myself and any speaker who comes up to speak to you from this podium. Good evening, board members, cabinet colleagues, community members, and families. My name is Michelle Joseph. This is my 38th year teaching special education students in California. It's my 30th year with Saugus Union School District. I understand that the state has created certain mandates in regard to special needs students, with one of those mandates requiring the majority of special-day class students to be mainstreamed or included 40% of the day. Per Reagan-Atkins versus San Diego Unified School District in 2002, there is a legal presumption in favor of educating students with disabilities with their non-disabled peers. Districts may not remove a disabled child from a regular classroom unless the nature and severity of the disability is such that education in the regular classroom cannot be achieved satisfactorily. It is my understanding that here in Saugus Union School District, half of our allotted students in special-day classes are in the moderate-severe SDCs and are generally deemed to have needs too severe to be in the general education setting. However, the mild-moderate classes, special-day classes, have now become more moderate than mild, with mild students being kept in the general education classrooms with resource specialist support. Many of the students that we now have in mild-moderate classrooms not only have academic struggles, but also have social-emotional and behavioral struggles. These students can and have been mainstreamed in the general education classroom to the extent possible. However, considering the idea that education in the regular classroom will be achieved satisfactorily, further mainstreaming is an issue. If we are putting students into the general education classroom because they can sit quietly and not disturb the class, but they are not grasping the curriculum, are we truly following the law? In addition, the general ed teachers do not have the experience or the resources that the special education teachers have. They need the support of the district to effectively work with special needs students. When the district is asked when the general education teachers are going to be provided this training, these workshops, et cetera, the answer is always, "We are working on it." I looked at the workshops being offered for our fall professional development. I did not see a single workshop there for gen ed teachers to receive any information on the special needs students being put in their classrooms. It is basically coming from those of us on campuses who have the experience that teachers need training. You've asked what types of support these teachers need. This is a big one. It's huge. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Boystein.
President Watson, members of the school board, and Superintendent Hawkins, I am Tim Ben Boystein, speaking as a private citizen this evening. First, I want to thank you all for your service. It is not an easy thing sometimes when you're in front of the people, having spent six years as city councilman in the great city of Santa Clarita. It was a pleasure and a joy serving the people, which I know is the reason why you're here. The reason I'm here is to let you know that there are severe issues in the Saugus Union School District, and they are not the same issues that we had before. And I can say that because when my daughter was first born, my wife, who is a teacher and who will speak in a moment, we had a discussion about whether that, our daughter should go to public school, or whether we should scrimp and save and put her in private school because her family sometimes has that background. And I indicate how important it was, I felt, for her to be in public school because I had a public school education right here in Santa Clarita through, from kindergarten on up. And I believe, and guess what? It turned out to be that way for her. She's 23 now. However, the last few years, there's been serious problems at this district. You should know that, since in LA County, 35 bond issues for schools were floated, only one lost, that would be the Saugus Union School District. You have lost the faith and confidence of the public, who was always willing to support the schools, but they're not supporting you guys, and you gotta ask yourselves why. I am here to let you know that there are serious problems in the classrooms that most parents out there don't know about, that their children are being put in harm's way, and that the children that are putting them in harm's way are not getting the help that they need. These children are our lives. These children, we put in your care, and these children are at risk. Children, what is going to happen to this district? Are we gonna wake up one day like some teacher did in the Midwest, find themselves shot by one of the students because people didn't take the warning seriously? This is happening on this district a regular basis. Children are being threatened. People are being kicked, bitten, bruised. This is happening on a regular basis. If you don't know it, then you need to get into the classrooms, no matter what the superintendent says, and observe for yourself. You would be shocked. If you are aware of it, then you need to let the public know what it is you're going to do about it. Thank you so much for your service. You have a wonderful evening.
Next, on the topic for the need for additional teacher aides, Carla Ramos. And we'll follow that with Brandon Holtclaw.
Good afternoon. My name is Carla Ramos, and I am a parent of a student at Bridgeport. As a room parent for one of the kinder classes at Bridgeport, I was recently asked to coordinate two room parent volunteers for every Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday afternoon. This is in addition to the morning afternoons that we request for the centers. The two parent volunteers must oversee three kindergarten classes, each parent overseeing approximately 30 students. During these 30 minutes, the teachers are pulled away from the general classroom so that they can dedicate this time to the children with special educational needs. How is it fair that 25 to 30 children are missing out on fundamental learning opportunities so that a select number of children can have the one-on-one time with the teacher? These children need additional resources. We have access to the resources. You talk about $300,000 wasted on a ballot? Why are we turning a blind eye to our children? What if it was your children in these classrooms? Getting told that they have to go to the trash can because they're trash? They don't believe in themselves. They don't believe in adults. These children need additional resources. They need aids. I am not a teacher. I was not trained to be an educator, but there I am overseeing 30 children, and yes, they're working on iReady, they're working on the computers, but you know, there's so many disruptions that other children are covering their ears, la-la-la-la-la. How is that okay? I don't understand what is happening. Santa Clarita is supposed to have the good schools. We also thought about it. Do we need to pay for private school? No, this is Santa Clarita, academic and personal success for every child. What child are you talking about? The kinder classes need additional aids to assist during this time. I have seen kids yell, scream, plug their ears because there were so many- I have seen kids yell, scream, plug their ears because there were so many disruptions. Children yelling that they belong in the trash and throwing themselves in the trash. They were not removed from the classroom. Oh no, the teachers have to learn to deal with it. But here I'm hearing that they don't have any assistance, any training. What are we expecting them to do? Be magicians? This is unacceptable. We need to prioritize our children's educational needs. Thank you for your time. I hope that we come to a better solution together than this current situation.
Mr. Holtclaw, you have three minutes.
Greetings to the board, district cabinet, faculty and community. Tonight, I would like to bring to full attention an issue that has negatively impacted the working conditions of various teachers and service providers, as well as hindered the ability of students to receive the accommodations and confidentiality that they deserve in their daily learning experience. This year, in numerous school sites, multiple service providers and teachers have been put together into single classrooms in an effort to find fiscal saving opportunities to benefit our district. While we appreciate those efforts, we must make it clear here and now that those decisions cannot come at the cost of our employees' ability to do their job ethically or at the cost of the accommodations or additional resources that our most vulnerable students need to be successful. Some students may need a calming private area to de-escalate with a school psychologist. Some students need a quiet setting to hear specific verbal prompts during speech in order to properly articulate their ideas. Some students will need a distraction-free area to complete a test with a resource specialist. And some students may need a space to make big body movements or manipulate objects in adopted physical education. Whatever additional resource a student may need, it requires the appropriate place to provide it. As you can imagine, these cannot all take place simultaneously in the same room. And I suspect if these professionals had been asked about how this would play out, I wouldn't be standing up here speaking today. Our professionals have expressed their discontent. Parents have expressed concerns in meetings, and students have questioned why last year they had the space they needed to be successful, and this year they do not. As the district became aware of our plan to develop a message to you tonight, Mr. Nick Heinlein reached out to our SDA president, Ms. Linda Valdez, and myself for more information, and for this, we are grateful. With this proactive approach, a collaborative discussion has begun about how we can get our service providers into the necessary spaces they need to ethically and effectively provide their minutes the law requires. So tonight, I express the urgency in finding solutions to providing every service provider who has been impacted the space they need in a timely manner, because those minutes are adding up every day. Like our students who have specific requirements to be successful, every school site will have specific requirements to make the transition successful. We look forward to an open, productive and time-sensitive collaboration to bring our staff and students the experience they deserve. Thank you.
Next up is Debbie Suie. Okay. Then, on the subject of behavior, we have Leah Kogan. And then, following that, on the subject of safety, we'll go to Charity Wood and then Brianna Adachi.
Hello, I'm Leah Kogan, and I started teaching in 1997. And if anyone has ever been in my classroom who have known me, I love teaching. It's the best job ever. And I can't identify myself as anything else but a teacher. So 19, 2021, I had to take a leave of absent because the classroom has been very difficult for me. It was a very difficult time in my life. And I'm speaking on behalf of all my coworkers who are with me, whoever had to deal with students that are super difficult. I taught kindergarten for a long time and they were my greatest joy. But that year and the years coming up, I knew there was a change where the class size got bigger and bigger and bigger, less aid support, and we are asked to do more with less. So I've lost a partner teacher along the way of my 20 years of teaching, you know. I know, I go back to when it was half-day K, I got a partner teacher, 20 to 1. So it was glorious and beautiful. And along the way, it's changed, but when, after COVID, 2021, you know, I had a student who had special needs. She had sensory overload or whatever her case was where I had to accommodate when it was too loud or she was bored. She would walk around the class and would throw furniture. I would get hit. I would cry. Kids would cry. I asked for help and admin would, you know, take her out for a walk or the next day she'll be back. But I understand this child had special needs. But in my classroom, I could not teach my 30 students. I couldn't teach them, and they were little, and I was stuck in this place where every day I showed up to work and I knew one of my students would get hit, or me. Books would be thrown in the classroom, kids would get bitten. But yet, I'm not allowed to tell parents what happened to their child if their child was hurt that day because we had to protect the special child that was in my classroom with a file this thick. And I tried to file for papers, SST is a 30-day process, so I had to endure all that. And of course, I cried every day. I didn't want to go to work anymore, and I was no longer myself. I lost 20 pounds. And then I finally had to go to my doctor and said, "I can't do this. I'm having ulcers, migraines." It was physically affecting me. So I went on a leave of absence, and I've been out for three years. And I'm traumatized, and I can't go back in the classroom knowing that who knows what kind of classroom or student I would get, and I have no power to protect the rest of my students. I have no power to protect myself. I have no rights as a teacher.
Thank you.
Second that. Good evening, cabinet and board members. My name is Charity Wood. I have been within the district since 1997, and I come to you as a frustrated, overwhelmed and disheartened kindergarten teacher in our district. I have been teaching kindergarten since 2011, and have to say, we are no longer providing the kindergarten that these children deserve and so desperately need. Yes, I know things that change and develop over the years, and not everything stays the same. But whether it was 10 years ago, or five years ago, or just last year, these are still five-year-olds. These are five-year-old kiddos that we are to be educating. The purpose of kindergarten should in part be to teach them how to be learners, to find their way in loving to learn new things. Kindergarten should be a safe and stable environment for them to spend nearly seven hours of their day. Many students don't have stability or security in their own homes, and we are their one place where they should not need to worry. Instead of an environment that fosters these ideas, many students are coming to school each day, wondering if today will be the day that their classroom is evacuated, if an upset peer might throw a marker at their head or hurt their teacher, or a frustrated friend pushed him to the ground, or a friend of theirs ripping everything off the classroom walls, including their work. You say, "Kids are resilient." We hear it all the time. But if I, as a grown adult, am going home at the end of every day with my emotions dysregulated, how do you think these little munchkins are feeling? It absolutely breaks my heart for all involved, including those children who need the extra support. It's not healthy or fair for those kiddos who have the big emotions and behaviors to spend a large part of their day in a state of distress. It is an absolute travesty that we are not giving them the support and tools to be and feel successful. Having a calming corner in my classroom isn't helping the child who feels their emotions are so out of control. It just becomes a place where they can find more items to destroy and throw. Everyone is losing out, the teachers, the students being exposed to such events, and the children having difficulties. I agree that we can't solve it all with the wave of a magic wand, but we need to admit that there is a problem and things need to change. It is your job to ensure that teachers and students have the support to succeed. Schools need additional trained support staff. Schools must have a behaviorist at their sites all five days, not two and a half and every other Wednesday. I feel kindergarten classes need a full-time aide in the classrooms, especially at the beginning of the year. We need a counselor who is allowed to do their job and not putting out fires and chasing kiddos all day long. Without the counselor being able to have social groups and work with students in small groups, those kiddos became, become the big behaviors in a year or so. And what does that, I know it comes with a cost, but what is more important than our children's safety and well-being?
Next is Brianna Adachi, followed by Ingrid Boydston.
Good evening, cabinet and board members. This is not the first time any of you are hearing from me. As an obviously outspoken teacher and a mother of a student at one of our campuses, I feel like it's my responsibility to share with you the feelings and experiences of myself and fellow colleagues. I have sent personal emails to all five board members about my experiences in the classroom. Thank you to Patty Garibay and Matt Watson for your response to my email sent on September 16th. Thank you to Anna Grease for reaching out and asking more about my concerns and how she can better help teachers in this district. Unfortunately, I never received a response from Christopher Trunkie or Katherine Cooper. It is very disheartening when I reach out with concerns about my experiences of having been punched, cussed out, and how on multiple times needing to evacuate my classroom for student safety due to repeated behaviors from one student, and you can't even take a minute to respond or even acknowledge that you received the email. It is said that in SUSD, we live the phrase, "Together, we achieve more." It is hard to achieve more together when two of the five, two of the five board members don't acknowledge concerns. As teachers, we are willing to work with you, but it's hard when our hands are tied by mandates that are made by board members and cabinet that lack the real understanding of what is going on in classrooms today and by those who only look at data rather than being present to see what that skewed data actually looks like in real time. I think we can all agree that reading about incidents on paper is a lot different than experiencing it firsthand. With that said, Dr. Hawkins recently came out to visit our site. It was nice to have her walking through our classrooms to see what we are experiencing every day. She had a few conversations with some of my TK kiddos before she left to visit other classrooms. However, she missed a lot of behaviors because her visit was brief. On that same day, one of the classrooms was evacuated due to a student throwing classroom items at peers, as well as cussing and destroying the classroom. Those evacuated students went home crying and some even hurt. Another student on that same day eloped and was able to get completely off of campus. Sadly, these two incidences are not isolated and have happened on more than one occasion. Studies show that students have a hard time regulating their emotions. Schools have implemented calming corners and calming tools with social stories and fidgets to help these students regulate so they can access the curriculum in the classroom. For many of these dysregulated students, being asked to go to a calming corner isn't enough. They are jumping on the beanbag chair and throwing the tools instead of using them correctly. You may say they need an adult to help them. Yeah, I agree with you. But what do you say to that kindergarten teacher who has 28 dependent students in their classroom? How is one teacher supposed to de-escalate a student and simultaneously teach or even just keep the other 27 students occupied? If we are really concerned about learning loss, this should be a bigger concern at the top of our list to solve. I will always be a mother first, and with a first grader and next year a possible TK student, it is my job to advocate for the best possible environment and education for my children. Can all of you honestly say that you feel our students are being given the best possible environment every day for learning, not just better test scores? Thank you.
Mrs. Boydston, you have three minutes.
We are all here tonight because we are, we love all the children and we are passionate about education. Please keep that first in your mind. I'm Ingrid Boydston, and I am very proud to have been named a California Teacher of the Year, but you know what I'm more proud of? Being a teacher here in Saugus since 1988. But there is a problem here that is so big, and I don't even know how many of you are aware of it. We can't solve it until you're aware of it, so please let me be clear. Now, apparently you are after tonight. But what I'm going to tell you, and I'm not referring to any particular student or students or class. These problems have been happening in Saugus since before COVID, and just because they're nationwide doesn't mean we have to continue to allow it. Please imagine for a moment that you are a child, that you are your own child. You're sitting in class and you're doing the very best you can to learn, but there's another child and they're crawling under the desks, they're climbing the bookshelf, they're trying to knock over the big computer in the front of the room. They make noise all the time, and the teacher repeatedly has to stop the lesson to try to redirect and reteach that child. And sometimes this child does stop to go sit in a corner to color or play with toys, not do the lesson. How do you, as the other child, feel? What have you learned? How do you feel about that? This time, it's a different child running around in your classroom, knocking over the chairs and the desks, saying inappropriate things to the teacher, throwing crayons and pencils and scissors. This time, the behavior is stopped, but that child is not removed. No, everybody else in the classroom leaves the classroom and goes into another classroom to disrupt a whole other lesson. You do get to go back to your classroom eventually, but the room's a mess and you're told to just pretend it didn't happen. How do you feel? How well did you learn? Now you're in your classroom, and the child in the hallway's been screaming at the top of their lungs for over 20 minutes. You don't know why they're screaming, why nobody is helping them, and if that's going to be you one day, how do you feel about school now? Now imagine that you are the teacher, and you see that child with special needs that results in their wandering behaviors. You want to help that child, but there's no way you can while simultaneously meeting all these kids' needs. You see the child who's had so much trauma that they're screaming in your class, and your heart breaks for them. But you can't even remove them from the classroom to calm down. Everybody else has, has trauma as well. And then you look at the other 27 faces. What do you see? I will tell you what you see. You see children who are sad, angry, frustrated and having anxiety at five. These are the same problems that the teachers are feeling. It's happening every day in Saugus. It doesn't have to. It didn't use to, and it's not just the children who are changing. Our class size is out of control. We have less aide than ever. The placement for special needs kids is changing, and it's not okay. And the way we handle behaviors, I was told not to do anything that might make a child feel bad. I would never make a child feel bad on purpose, but when you break a rule, sometimes it feels bad. Ladies and gentlemen, with all due respect, it is your job to help us do our job. We're not asking for you to make it easy. We're asking for you to make it possible. There are solutions. If you will please listen to us and start making them. Ask us. We'll tell you what we think should be done. Thank you for being here tonight. Everybody, God bless you.
Next up. Next up is Jessica Song. Although, Ms. Song, you had a note to adhere time to Ingrid Boydston. There, you. Mrs. Boydston, you had your three minutes.
Oh, this was for Jessica Song. I believe she's allowed to adhere her time to me, but I'm happy to let somebody else speak first.
Not on the same subject. And Ms. Rollins? Ms. Rollins? Ms. Rollins? Ms. Rollins? Okay, you had the same notice about.
I would like to give my time to Mrs. Boydston. She is a teacher of my child, and I would like to hear what she has to say.
Okay, we'll move on to the next topic. Subtreatments. And the next speaker is Karen Carville.
Mr. Trunkie, excuse me, but you have.
Karen Carville.
You have two citizens of our, of our community that wants to.
Karen Carville.
Mr. Trunkie.
Karen Carville. We heard Ms. Boydston. She had her three minutes.
Mr.
We did not cut her off. She had her three minutes. Mrs. Carville, three minutes.
Hold on. If we all agree that she offered up her time to Mrs. Boydston, Mrs. Song offered up her time.
She wants to speak on a different topic. She is allowed three minutes on a different topic. So the next topic is sub-treatment, and Mrs. Carville. Followed by Laurel Castagna.
Mr. Trunkie, can anyone hear me?
Can we, can we decide as a board that we're going to allow her to speak?
Karen Carville.
Mr.
You have three minutes. Mrs. Doll, you can start the clock. You can start the clock. Mrs. Carville is right there.
Can anyone hear me?
Yeah.
Three minutes. Three minutes.
Mr. Trunkie, I agree with Ms. Ms. Garibay. We need to allow the speakers to speak. You cannot just bulldoze over and not allow people to speak who came here wanting to be listened to.
Boydston had her three minutes. If she wants to fill out another card and speak on a different topic, she can have another three minutes. So Mrs. Carville, three minutes. You may start the clock.
Mr. Trunkie, before we start, how many more speaker cards do we have?
Mrs. Doll, you can start the clock, please. Mr. Watson.
Yes, how many more speaker cards do we have, Mr. Trunkie?
We have three more speakers.
Let them speak.
Can we can we at least move Mrs. Boydston to the end to finish what she has to say after?
As I just said, if she wants to fill out another card and speak on a different subject, she can have her three minutes. So. Mrs. Carville, you're next. Mrs. Doll, please start the clock.
Can we not take a board vote to ensure that we allow the speakers to speak?
Mrs. Carville, Mrs. Carville, you may begin. Mrs. Doll, please start the clock. Please start the clock. Doll, please start the clock.
Uh, yikes. I'd like to do a public comment regarding SUSD's treatment of substitute teachers or guest teachers, as they called. I have worked for the district since 2019 and have many happy teachers that I have sub for. I'm sure some of you will request me. As you can imagine, walking into new classrooms every day can be challenging, as you can attest. Every teacher has their own catchy songs, ways they dismiss students, challenging behaviors, unexpected situations, fire alarms, and anything else you can imagine. Sadly, we are never invited to any in-person training like what the district had on November 1st. We don't have an email address, so we don't get updates on policies or other various useful tools. We are not protected by the union, so we get taken advantage of, and we are treated like temp employees and are expendable. Let me explain. Since February 2023, I have been blackballed from six schools: Rosedale, Boquet, Highlands, Mountain View, Plum, and West Creek. Plum and Highlands, I haven't worked for in probably over two years. One of these schools is my own child's school. Ironically, this began soon after Anna Grease took her position and I supported her campaign. If you see from my public records request, all a teacher has to do is email Barbara and the district office and say they don't want a teacher in their class or school. I have provided those emails to the board, and I've also provided them to the Teachers Union President. February 21st, 8:00 a.m., quote, "I need to have Karen Carville blocked from being a substitute in my classroom." Same day, 2:30 p.m., "All of the second grade team needs Karen Carville blocked from being a substitute." April 11th, "Block the following people from my room," and it listed four people. A few minutes later, someone else lists the same four people. No reason given or required. No reason, no feedback back to the sub or call, nothing. To use an official legal term, there is no due cause to block a sub. And this was confirmed with Ms. Stevenson on February 5th. I've never been written up as an employee. I'm guilty of being a very involved parent and community member. So this is clearly personal and possibly political. I mean, it's not like I'm starring in an anti-Mike Garcia ad promoting abortions, for heaven's sakes. Yes, one of our teachers has done that. One of the last times I subbed at my child's school, our principal, Ms. Bellina, said to me, quote, "I feel like you're on campus when you're on campus, you're looking for something wrong. You do know that I can make it, so you can't work here any longer." Threat? Probably.
Thank you.
Sure. And Ms. Laurel is going to contribute money. And it's my word.
Laurel Castagna, you have three minutes.
When you're an outspoken parent in this district and an employee, your job is threatened. They dangle it over your head like a carrot. Well, Ms. Bellina finally put into the writing, she told me that I can't work at my child's school because some teachers and staff members are uncomfortable with how vocal you are in the community at board meetings and on social media. I have asked for an actual policy on this treatment for subs, and I have been proved provided nothing. I personally know of others that have been blackballed for retaliation or a minor misunderstanding. You're probably thinking, what's the big deal about having a few subs not allowed to work at our schools? Well, August of last year, you approved a contract with Scoot Education, which is a company when use when we can't find subs. Right now, SUSD pays us 180 for a full day and 100 for half. SUSD pays Scoot 283 for a full day and 190 for half-day. That's 100 over what we pay our subs. We use this company for paras, too. We pay Scoot 45 an hour. That's over $20 an hour that we pay for extra. And let me guess, Nick, this is taken out of the same fund that we pay our staff. Maybe that's why our teachers aren't getting raises. I randomly picked two months to look up what we paid Scoot. Last August, we gave Scoot over 10,000, and in May, we gave over 13,000. So we are paying extra money because we have a less desirable district to work for. We are anti-parent. We retaliate against staff for speaking out and being involved. It's time to hold Colleen Hawkins and the HR department accountable for this dictatorship style of dealing with employees and misuse of funds. Questions that the board members should ask are: One, how many subs do we have employed by the district? Break it down by teacher, para, custodian, nurse, etc. Two, how many have been blackballed from one or more schools? Three, why is there not a reason that this is required? Four, why do we not provide constructive criticism or feedback to subs and guide them to do better? As a reminder, retaliation is the workplace occurs when an employee experiences negative employment actions as a result of engaging in a protected activity. Could you imagine if I find 20 subs that have been affected by this? I look forward to the board asking questions and getting honest answers. One last note, I want to make it clear, is I am I am not angry at any teachers or principals that have done this. I think they were given bad advice, don't understand that they are ruining somebody's livelihood, or maybe were caught up in the moment of emotion and didn't think of the repercussions repercussions of their actions. My hope is that this board acts like a boss and gets answers and a policy put into place that is fair and legal. I hope the union speaks to their members and explains that we are all a team and subs should be given the same courtesy that all staff get when we are imperfect or have a bad day. Next time teachers say, "We're all the subs, and why are we not getting raises?" I hope you reflect on my comments. Thank you.
Next on the substitute issue, Emily Lidle. Or Little, I apologize.
Thanks, everyone, for being here. I know this is a contentious evening, and I wasn't actually planning to speak, but I do think it's important to come and say that if you're going to be a sub but go into a classroom and or a school and target gay students or single them out or speak against certain type of students, you shouldn't be a sub at that school.
Was that our last speaker, Mr. Trunkie?
Next, we have one request from an online person, Mr. Petzold. She's still available? Mr. Petzold? Mr. Petzold, you're muted.
There you go.
You have three minutes.
Well, thank you very much. I just wanted to cover the Measure N issue two, and obviously you have problems much bigger than Measure N at this time. But out of 35 bond measures in Los Angeles County, and remember, a school bond needs at least 55% to pass. Only one lost in Los Angeles County, and that's Saugus Measure N. Not only did it lose, it didn't get 55%, it didn't even get a plurality of votes. That's almost unheard of across the state. As of tonight, there were 28,688 votes against Measure N, 27,304 in favor of Measure N. So there's no other way to interpret this as a as a vote of no confidence. I don't know why you put Measure N on, given all the information that you had before it went on, that consultants had had a problem with it, and obviously hadn't been well thought through. So anyway, I did want to talk to Measure N. And in the future, if you're going to put a measure like this on, write an honest ballot question, involve the community in advance. Don't try to max it out at the $30 per 100,000 evaluation. Be more modest in your request. You know, this community wants to support education. That's clear by the participation tonight. So anyway, I breaks my heart to hear the, especially Ingrid Boydston, who I'm a friend with, over the experiences in the school. And I just, those situations need to be addressed, and I hope that you will do so in a professional manner that that honors those people that are bringing the issues before you. So from Douglasville, Georgia, I'm going to wish you all a good night. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Trunkie, was that the last speaker that we have in public comment?
We have one more. We have Ms. Boydston again.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Thank you. These are solutions. I wasn't sure I was going to get a chance to say anything about that. But this is this is what I was hoping to start tonight. These are things we could do. Provide a safe space on campuses for the kids who are deregulated, dysregulated, to calm down before integrating them back into the classroom. That will save them so much angst and anxiety and allow the other children to continue learning while the other one has to get through whatever it is that they have to get through. Come on, people, be compassionate. That used to be the principal's office or the AP's office, but it could be the social worker's room. I was going to say the empty rooms, except for the fact I hope they go back to the people who should be working there. Number two, this is a tough one, but it would require a change in policy, but I think that's your job. How about we only place kids with special needs in the classroom after the special supports are in place? Okay, if you need to release them gradually, that would be great, but stop putting kids in the classroom and saying it's going to take 90 days to see whether or not they sink or swim. It makes them anxious, overwhelmed, and then they act out, and they become frustrated and angry and violent. And it didn't need to happen. You are thereby altering forever their potential to love learning and everybody else who's in the classroom with them. Number three, give teachers back the tools that we need to develop, the kids, the tools that we need to give kids so that they can monitor their own behaviors. We supposedly use PBIS. Well, according to the School Safety Report published in 2020, PBIS is not exclusive of other interventions and supports, but a framework which integrates other complementary practices, policies, and initiatives. At the classroom level, that's supposed to mean the daily use of effective classroom management practices. We've been mandated not to use things like clip charts on the basis that they might cause shame or they could make kids feel bad. You know what? You don't need a chart to shame a child. I could do that with words, and I try not to. I would never want to do that purposefully. Okay? And yes, sometimes kids do feel bad when they pull a clip down, but I feel bad when I get stopped by the traffic cop to pay a ticket. But you know what? I didn't get into an accident. And it's like saying, by taking out things like that, kids can't see where their behavior is. It's like taking the gas gauge out of your car. Good luck trying to remember when to fill up your tank. I could go into that more. Did you know that California is 50th out of 50 states for class size? I believe that's inaccurate. If you put in the high schools, we tie with Utah, but I think it might be a little bit different there. I don't know that we can turn this one around fast, but we did it once before, so we could do it again. And in the meantime, put the aides back in the classroom, especially for TKK. Another adult in the classroom would go a long way towards heading these behaviors off of the past. We wouldn't be here tonight if somebody had been in my classroom from the beginning of the year this year, for me personally. That goes for a lot of people, I'm sure. Number five, do not make TK and K kids go to school longer. Universal dismissal time? New Hall adopted it, except for TK and K. Why? It is not developmentally appropriate. You wouldn't go to Disneyland without giving your kids a break. Don't make them go to school for that much longer. They're going to get more strung out. They're going to learn less, and there's going to be more behavior. And this is the easiest fix of all. Take out the overly large desks from the primary classrooms. You are crowding the children in there, and it's not necessary. Why do we have to have them? I don't understand. They were purchased? Okay, you know what? Give them to somebody who wants them. You can put tables in there, get everything done, and the kids don't have to be crammed together. If we if you guys all want to have to sit in these chairs all really, really close together? No, you're happy to have space to spread out. We don't have that space in the kindergarten rooms. I invite any board member to drop in on my classroom anytime. I don't want to know that you're coming. I want you to see what it's really like. I want you to feel what it's like, so please try to stay for at least half a day. And thank you for letting me give my solutions, because I would really rather focus on fixing this than on the problem. And once again, God bless you. Good night.
Moving on to reports, we will hear from Ms. Linda Valdez from the Saugus Teachers Association.
I just I have to say thank you to the teachers and carrot educators and families who are brave enough to to share about your experiences. And it's not easy coming to the mic and talking about something that is so personal and sensitive and with such great care and regard, because I know you all, and I know how much you love your students and you love this district and how long you have dedicated your lives to the children in our community. So thank you. Good evening, board members, cabinet, colleagues, community members, and families. We'd like to congratulate our award award winners tonight. We're always very proud of our students. Fall parent-teacher conferences are underway, and since the start of the school year, teachers across the district have regularly communicated with families through Parent Square, phone calls, newsletters, IEP 504, and SST meetings, and of course, the good old daily check-ins at the dismissal gate. Parent conferences are charged with a targeted task of providing specific information about student needs and progress based on anecdotal observations, work products, and assessments. The goal is to hone in on next steps with families as they are an integral part of the student success team. Parent-teacher conferences are valuable at this point in the year specifically, but our hope is that the district will consider making the spring conferences optional and up to teacher discretion as conversations with parents about interventions, differentiation, best practices, and progress monitoring will continue to be ongoing throughout the remainder of the school year. We wanted to take a moment to reflect on the efforts that have been made by STA and the district to open up lines of communication and problem solve together. We hope that our survey, coupled with the many teacher suggestions we gathered, along with the start, stop, and continue ideas shared at the November 1st Professional Development Day, are being closely reviewed and considered for improving working conditions. To those board members who have reached out, offering to meet with us and talk about solutions, we greatly appreciate it. Our members have expressed gratitude to you, Mrs. Grease, for making yourself available to them to listen, to answer questions, and to visit their classrooms and school sites. Mrs. Garibay, thank you for offering to meet with our executive board to discuss possible solutions. Ms. Mr. Watson and Mrs. Cooper, we look forward to spending time with you as you join our STA Executive Board at the CTA Bay Valley Service Center Council School Board Dinner on December 2nd, where we will have an opportunity to share about our union mission of teacher and student advocacy.
I have visited all of our schools utilizing the CTA president's release site visit grant. It has provided me the opportunity to engage with our members, to listen to concerns, and to answer questions. Overwhelmingly, teachers have expressed the lack of supports in place to meet the needs of their highly dysregulated students. This has been an ongoing concern that is not being adequately addressed despite urgent requests from teachers, para educators, and site administrators. Teachers feel that the impact in the classroom compromises safety and adds to the trauma that many students already face. We continue to request training to meet the ever-changing needs of our students. And while developing academic professional learning cycles is important, perhaps focusing on the social-emotional well-being of our students would be of greater value at this time during our Wednesday CIPs. We must first address the social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students in order for instruction and learning to take place. I know we are all very familiar with Maslow's hierarchy of needs. To piggyback on what Brandon shared earlier, the loss of appropriate instructional space for our service providers to work with our most emotionally and academically vulnerable students has proven to cause unnecessary challenges to student learning. From the start of the year, service providers who offer specialized interventions in speech and language, resource, occupational therapy, adaptive PE, as well as our school psychiat- psychologists and our social workers, have been moved to shared spaces. They have expressed concerns with the lack of appropriate space to provide targeted interventions, individualized assessments, and to meet with parents. Forpah is compromised. Parents are beginning to bring up concerns with the new shared spaces and the impacts it has on their children who have IEPs. At a recent site visit, I learned that some students who have difficulty focusing now wear headphones when they go to resource due to the increased noise and stimulus in the, in that environment. One student reported, "I could focus and learn a lot better last year." Now, while we all appreciate the efforts to save money that may potentially result in increased compensation on our salary schedules as we are, are a Me Too district, shaving off funds on the backs of our students and our teachers who work directly with them at school sites cannot be an option. I'm grateful to you, Mr. Heinlein, for reaching out when you recently became aware of the concerns that our service providers have had from the beginning of the school year. I appreciate the conversation we had about looking at ways to reverse this attempt at cutting costs and to reopen some, if not all, of the fifty-six classrooms that were closed this year. Our members' voices must continue to be heard. Thank you.
Next, the California School Employees Association, Chapter 112, Ms. Delmi Calderon.
Marcos, Marcos, na yeah. Good evening, um, cabinet members, board members, and community. My name is Delmi Calderon. I'm the president of the chapter, um, for our union. And in my speech I wrote, "I am honored to be here, but I would like to change it to the fact that I am embarrassed to be here." I've been around this district, I want to say I'm going on thirty years, and I have never witnessed such a negative environment. And I'm just, I hope it gets better, and I pray it does. I would like to take to an, I would like to, um, extend our heartfelt congratulations to the recipients of tonight's award. It is inspiring to see students recognized from their exemplary reading skills and positive behaviors that help them achieve such. Families, celebrate your children's achievement with much honor. Excuse me. Um, next, I would like to publicly express a deepest gratitude to all, all of our parent educators, especially working in the special education. They deserve genuine recognition for their dedication supporting students with unique needs. Each day, they contribute profoundly to our schools, not only assisting students, but also teachers in the wider school community. To our special education parent educators, thank you for implementing individualized education plans, fostering positive rela- learning environments, and working tirelessly, even when faced with, with challenges such as physical behaviors, um, physical behavior from students. Your efforts do not go unnoticed, and your dedication is very obvious at each site. To our general education parent, parent educators, thank you for managing classrooms impacted by multiple challenges and behavior. Your unwavering support helps us navigate these complexities to sustain our classrooms daily. For those of you working in more intensive settings like the SDC classes, including Boquet Early Learning Academy, recognize, recognize the unique challenges we face daily. Whether it's dealing with behavioral incidents or facility limitations, we are aware of that disparity in stipends and are actively working along Dr. Stevenson and our labor representative to address this through a possible MOU, ensuring that all, all of you receive recognition and deserve through a stipend. If the teachers that you work with receive a stipend, our parent educators should also be eligible to, to receive the stipend while working with the same students. CSCA members recently began asking about conducting a survey similar to the one done by STA. While we will have, okay, calm down. While we have conducted several surveys in the past and share our, and share, and share our member concerns during meeting conference sessions and negotiations this year, this year we decided to take an additional step and share those concerns directly with the governing board. Mr. Marcos, would you please share a copy to each member? As you can see, many of our members feel that they are not being supported as they would like to be. Understanding that a simple yes or no response will not provide enough context, we also ask them to share how they will feel more supported by their administration. We are still gathering some of that data, valuable feedback, and we are hope, and we are hoping to share that in the future to make our district stronger, more collaborative, because together we achieve more. We look forward to sharing these additional supports. Additionally, I urge our board members to support greater professional development opportunities for all parent educators. We are calling for enhanced collaboration with school site leaderships to assess and improve the effectiveness of our programs with appropriate adjustments to salary stipends and recognitions of the skills and dedications you bring. On another note, I am reminded the words shared by Sylvia Arnoni, our VP, and a lead negotiator about the morale, about morale among classified employees. Morale remains low, and I ask every board member and administrator to take a moment when you encounter a classified employee to express your gratitude. A simple, genuine acknowledgement with eye contact goes a long way in building unity and respect across all levels of district staff. Just as I was editing my speech, I received a following email from the administrator that read, "I wanted to take a moment to express my appreciation for the incredible preschool transition meeting and presentations you all delivered this morning. It was evident that you put a lot of thought and effort and care in your preparation, and you truly show how well this presentation was conducted." This part of the email reminded me of the importance of acknowledging someone's work and how small, and how a small token of appreciation can go a long way. As behaviors and challenges continue to increase in our schools, whether in classrooms, schoolyards, or other areas, I plead our school, I plead our, with our board members and administrators to seek additional resources that will ensure the safety and well-being of all employees. We cannot overlook the importance of safety and support in our work environment. In closing, I would like to share the following quote by Jim Ruh, Ron, Ron, that I often apply to myself. "The challenge of leadership is to be strong, but not rude. Be kind, but not weak. Be bold, but not bully. Be thoughtful, but not lazy. Be humble, but not timid. Be proud, but not arrogant. Have humor without folly." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from the Sogas Administrators Association, Dr. Aguilar.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to acknowledge, uh, we plan this way ahead, and I always have the luck to have these kinds of meetings. But, um, just want to acknowledge the emotions and the, um, you know, the purposes of standing up here on this podium and working together to find solutions. So just wanted to put that out there. Um, so good evening, board, president, governing, uh, governing board, superintendent, cabinet. I am Ernestina Aguilar, proud principal of Highlands Elementary School. And today I am honored to address you on behalf of our Sogas Administrators Association. We want to congratulate all our superstar readers. They were super cute, selected and recognized today. And we are so proud of their hard work and the work that the teachers pour into them. It's November already, if we haven't noticed. There's been a lot happening in November. November is a month of change, reflection, and gratitude. It's a time for gathering with loved ones, celebrating traditions, and looking ahead to the future. It's also a time of giving back and encouraging acts of kindness and generosity. As we gather today, I want to take a moment to reflect on the small and big wins we've made within our school community. First of all, our commitment to PBIS continues to create an environment where every student feels valued and empowered. We can transparently say that it's not perfect, but it is, it is recognizing positive student behaviors, building genuine positive relationships, and implementing restorative practices that are making a difference for many of our most valued, vulnerable students. In fact, recently, we had Laco, our Los Angeles County of Education PBIS coordinators, share that out of all the districts they work with, Sogas by, is by far a district that has implemented PBIS practices with fidelity. It is important that we recognize our progress with this work. When we look at academics, we have to pause, just take note of the significant improvements we have already made this school year. Evidence of this progress can be found through the most recent assessments that we all gave, IAB data, and report cards. Our students are meeting or moving towards meeting expectations thanks to our dedicated educators who have worked tirelessly to ensure that every student receives the support they need to succeed academically. Again, it is important that we recognize our progress this, with this work. Equally important is our commitment to social, emotional learning. We have prioritized SEL, recognizing its critical role in shaping well-rounded individuals. Through SEL initiatives such as greetings at the door, community circles, and buddy ups, our students are developing essential social skills such as empathy, self-regulation, and effective communication. We see it every day when you walk into campus. Teachers are greeting students in the day, and their faces light up just by seeing their magical teacher. These competencies are foundational for the future success, both in and outside of the classroom. It is important that we recognize, again, our progress with this very important and necessary work. In addition, our partnerships with parents have been invaluable in this journey. Your involvement and, and feedback have helped tailor our support to meet the diverse needs of our students. Whether through volunteering or simply communicating regularly with your teachers, your dedication has strengthened the bond between home and school. It's important to recognize and celebrate the progress of these relationships. Currently, we're in the middle of parent teacher conferences, and we want to express our heartfelt gratitude to everyone for their continued collaboration and trust amongst our parents and teachers. Together, we are, we are creating a community that supports the growth of our students. We encourage each one of you to engage in meaningful conversations with our educators. This is a wonderful opportunity to discuss your child's progress, share insights, and collaboratively set goals for continued growth. Your perspective as a parent is invaluable, and together we can ensure that our students are not just prepared academically, but also emotionally and socially. As we take this moment to reflect on all the work we have put forth this year, I'm filled with gratitude for the supportive community we have built together. With every intervention we implement, every partnership we strengthen, and every student we uplift, we are paving the way for a brighter future. We appreciate the dedication and passion that each of you brings as, as it all creates a ripple effect of positivity in our lives and lives of our students. It is truly inspiring to witness how we uplift one another, and we are excited for the journey ahead as we continue to inspire and elevate our students together. We will continue to achieve remarkable things. On our behalf of all our Sogas administrators, we wish you all a month full of gratitude, reflection, generosity, and kindness. Um, and today, I was actually listening to, um, a message, and I thought it was appropriate for here, where it says that we all need conflict. I would add, we need healthy conflict, because that's the only way we can evolve as an organization and find solutions together. So with that, I want to, uh, present our school site council representative from Highlands, if that's okay, and she has agreed to speak on our school's behalf.
Can everyone stand up real quick? We've been sitting for so long. Just stand up. Get the wiggles out, stretch, yawn. Thank you. All right. Go ahead and sit back down, or if you have to, that's fine. But, uh, thank you for sticking around. My name is Mindy Collins. I'm a parent at Highlands Elementary. I'm here to represent the Student Site Council and the Parent Faculty Organization. Um, I wanted to share some of the success we've had at our school focusing on our students. All right, um, our parent faculty has been working hard this year, crazy hard. Our Fall Festival was the most successful we have seen to date. It included games, a silent auction, raffle baskets, performances that included community members. Um, and the event raised, how much? How much y'all think it raised? Ten thousand dollars. Yes, most successful to date. So during the school year, we've been able to provide a special treat or gift to staff members every single month. This month, this last month, we provided them with Vincenzo's Pizza in conjunction with our, um, Restaurant Night. Um, it was a family, community engagement event. Uh, we partnered up with Vincenzo's Pizza where, um, the, um, every pizza's sold. If you mentioned our elementary school, Highlands got a kickback. And all that money's going back into our school to support our teachers and our students. So we're looking forward to, um, some events at the end of the year. Um, finishing up this calendar year, we have the Literati Book Fair. Uh, will take place in December. And then our favorite is Coming Back Breakfast with Santa. And in order to support inclusion of all of our students, we've opened up more than one session to support families, um, being able to participate in this event and not have to exclude people at the door. So, um, very important to our, our organization. So our parents do a wonderful job volunteering, decorating the school so the students can feel excitement. We always have, not, I wouldn't say always, uh, but some of the beautiful decorations we have, or balloons and the yard signs, photo ops for the students, because you know, social media is really important nowadays. So, uh, Instagram with that great photo op. But anyway, really, um, I'm, I feel really fortunate and appreciate your time listening to me. I'm happy to be a Highlands parent. I have a third grader right now and a, um, little one who will be in TK next year. So we'll be around for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Next, we will hear from Ms. Mary Mann, representative of the Child Development Programs.
Thank you, my, thank you very much, board members and cabinet. Welcome. Well, I am so proud today to introduce the Assistant Site Supervisor- the Assistant Supervisor from North Park Elementary School. I visited her wonderful, wonderful Expanded Learning Program where she has activities that are organized, challenging and developmentally appropriate. So I give you Verma Morales.
I often hear the comment that I'm smiling at work and my response is always the same. I'm happy to be at work. I have the privilege of working with children and seeing the world through their curiosity and wonder. Good evening, Board members, Cabinet members and community members. My name is Verma Morales and I'm the Assistant Site Supervisor for the Child Development Program at North Park Elementary School. I'm here tonight to share a little bit about our CDP program at North Park. I arrive to work when TK and kindergarten students play in the small playground. Walking in the gate, I'm greeted by at least five or six children who are part of our CDP enrichment. They run to me and they greet me with a hug and a smile. They're always happy to see me and I'm glad to see them. They ask what we will be doing that day and I answer their questions and tell them that I hope they're having a nice day and I look forward to seeing them later. I walk into our building and I prepare for the day. I walk around the classrooms and ensure that everything is clean, neat and organized. The staff and I at North Park work together to make our environment comfortable and inviting for everyone. Our days are structured around a curriculum that provides enhanced components for math, art, literacy, social emotional learning, science and physical education. Our activities are universally engaging for a wide range of students. And the parents tell us they appreciate the time we spend ensuring that our students do their homework as most have outside activities that make it difficult to do their homework at home. It is important to provide a safe, comfortable and inviting environment where children can explore their interests and learn to work together while helping build skills that will provide lifetime benefits while maintaining a strong relationship with the parents. We showcase the children's work throughout our classrooms to show appreciation for their efforts and participation and highlight their talents. Parents tell us they enjoy seeing their children's work and that their children are enthusiastic about being in our after-school program. Most of our children do not want to go leave home when they're being picked up and often asked to stay longer. The staff at North Park CDP are dedicated to making each child's day a great day. They may have had a challenging day during school, but we strive to give each child a happy ending to their day. We build strong relationships with these children, making them feel important. Our goal is to build self-confidence so that our students are sure of themselves and what they contribute to the world. Thank you for your attention and for allowing me to share my joy and passion for working with children. I wish you all a good evening. Thank you.
Next are Superintendent and Cabinet Reports. We will start with Mrs. Berry's.
Good evening, everyone. I just also wanted to address the speakers that spoke tonight about student behavior. We have heard a lot over the past, I would say several weeks, including from the beginning of this year and last year. And I just want to continue to appreciate the open communication and the collaboration. And it is not a problem that one of us can solve. It's really going to take all of us and I appreciate your solutions because when we have a problem, and it is a complex problem, and it's really going to take all of us working together to turn that ship around. And we know it takes time. And so I really, I really appreciate that. I have a presentation tonight, so I'll keep it short. The other two things I wanted to say was congratulations to all of our reader awards tonight. And I hope everyone has a restful and great Thanksgiving break.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just wanted to share, received some good feedback from our training last week. We had five schools who are participating in Capturing Kids' Hearts this year. And there's a kind of a mid-year workshop that a leadership team from each of those schools went to called Process Champions. It's a program that we've gotten a lot of good feedback on. It is part of the social emotional program that we're working with, with Capturing Kids' Hearts. And we have some good possible negotiations for upcoming training for all of the other schools that we'll be talking about soon in Meet and Confer.
Dr. Stevenson.
All right. I just want to say congratulations to all of our award winners, our schools and our students. And happy Thanksgiving next week.
Mr. Heinlein.
Just one thing from me, and it's a positive. Our state October cash collections are higher than anticipated. So hopefully that will translate into additional funding for education to maybe address some of these issues.
Dr. Hawkins.
Well, first I want to thank the, or congratulate our students for their star reading. I had one of those great readers who stayed up all night, Mrs. Cooper. And it's really an important skill, whether it's fictional reading or informational reading for our students to do. I want to congratulate all our schools again on Healthiest, America's Healthiest Schools, but also on the 12 schools that were identified today as part of the honor roll for the Chamber of Commerce for their, their performance. So that is a really positive piece. I had the opportunity last week to spend some time at Bridgeport with their third through sixth grade teachers. We did some writing training and that is always a very fun and productive time with them. Gotten to see some samples, some rubrics that they put together and things since the training. And I look forward to the two more days of the series. But I do want to make a comment, statement about the comments we've heard about behavior today. This has been something that, as Mrs. Boydston said, we see nationally, but we also see it here in our district. And while I'd love to be able to control it nationally, it's our district that we need to work on it for. Right. So prior to tonight, Mrs. Berry's and I have been working on having a behavior council. That information is going out later this week. So I hope that you'll participate in it because it will involve teachers, it will involve social workers and it will involve our behavior specialists so that we can attack this problem because it is a complex, multifaceted problem. It is going to take a lot of dedication from all of us. It's going to take choices in our funding. So we're going to have to make hard choices. I know that our associations, both the classified and certificated, have a take in that and a say in that. And they'll also be participating. And so I look forward to seeing that beginning after the holiday. Of course, as you know, the holidays always eat up a lot of time for us. But that will take place and your principals will be working on that with staff. So I look forward to that going out. Again, coincidence, maybe? We've been talking about it since the first and I hope that it brings some good resolution.
Thank you. Board reports. Ms. Cooper.
Okay. This is an emotional night, isn't it? Nobody can hear me? Okay. I don't, I'm not a loud person, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm glad that Dr. Hawkins brought up the committee this morning. She, we've had conversations where I'm like, well, what about this? What about this? And it's balancing the rights of all of the children is... So it's my intention to be at at least some or maybe all of those committee meetings. I do really hope that you'll join because, you know, you're a powerful voice. My son actually had ADHD and he was... I was in an SST meeting once and I left crying because it was just, it wasn't this district. But, but I know that it can be frustrating. Anyway, so I'm very much looking forward to that. I did look at the, I don't know if Delmi's still here, but looking at this survey. They don't feel supported by the board. I do know that the board supports them, but as Maya Angelou said, people forget what you do to them and what you do for them, but they never forget how they make you feel. So we will do a better job or try to do a better job at making them feel more supported. I am happy to see, however, that they do feel overwhelmingly supported by their immediate supervisors, which I think is the most important thing that they, you know. I think that's very important. Congratulations to West Creek on their recognition as a 2024 model professional learning community at work. And I hope that you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving next week.
Mrs. Garibay.
I'll keep it brief. I know we still have a lot to cover and we want to give ourselves plenty of time to listen to those presentations. But I just wanted to echo, I think a couple people said it, but it really does take a lot of courage to get up here and to share your truth and, you know, the things that you're saying. So I appreciate that. And, and, you know, again, I'll keep it brief. We do need to do better. As a parent myself, it's very concerning. And I try to put myself in those shoes. And so anyways, we need to do better and we need to do more. So thank you for having the courage to come up here and tell us how things are going. And, you know, as much as we hear that we're not supportive, we all support you. So we'll, maybe we need to show that more. So thank you.
Mrs. Grace.
Um, yeah, I don't quite know what to say. I'm extremely appreciative of everyone that spoke up today. You know, I've been on this board for two years now, almost two years now, and it has been a reoccurring theme for two years. And I'm pleasantly surprised that other people that are sitting up on that dais tonight are actually saying it out loud that we have an issue and it's something that we need to find a solution for. So thank you for finally speaking up and, and letting the community know that you are finally hearing them and want to work towards a solution because these parents, these teachers, classified staff have been waiting at least two years for some sort of at least a conversation about what has been happening within this district. So I say thank you. I look forward to also attending these behavior councils. You know, I wish, Dr. Hawkins, I could have maybe offered some insight into that, like you have been talking with Ms. Cooper, knowing that I've been talking about this for two plus years. So I am looking forward to that. I'm appreciative of everyone speaking up. I would welcome more people to speak up and share their stories so that we can find solutions to very intricate problems and, and move forward. So thank you.
Mr. Watson.
Yes, absolutely. Good evening. Once again, I'd like to congratulate our superstar readers for their achievements and all of our schools for being named among America's Healthiest Schools. I know you're all working very hard every day just to ensure that our students are both physically and emotionally healthy. Clearly, we have a lot of work to do on several fronts, but you are to be congratulated for your success in approving, improving not only our academic outcomes for our students, but these benchmarks of health in our schools. Congratulations to West Creek Academy as well for being honored as a model PLC school. We're very proud of the work that you're doing. I'd like to express a lot of gratitude this evening. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Trunki again for presiding this evening while I am virtual. It's not an easy job. I'd like to thank the rest of the board for accommodating my work needs this evening. I'm at an educational conference this week. It occurs this time every year. But I too, here in my conference, heard the good news that our state found an extra, I think it was almost a billion dollars between the sofa cushions this year. So that was cause for celebration, Mr. Heinlein. Hoping that the new legislature will, will maximize the amount of that money that, that will make it back to our schools. As a matter of fact, tomorrow morning, I will be meeting with our newly elected state senator and will be advocating on behalf of our schools. I also want to thank Mrs. Valdez and the rest of the bargaining unit for the invitation to the Service Center Council School Board Dinner. I'm looking forward to attending and connecting with you. Thank you, Dr. Hawkins and Mrs. Berry's for addressing some of the concerns that were expressed this evening. I look forward to working long and hard with you, as well as my colleagues, on, on moving towards solutions, long-term and permanent solutions. I know it's a difficult task for our cabinet and all of our staff, but, but clearly there's work that needs to be done. In regards to tonight's public comment session, our board policy allows for members of the public to address this board for up to three minutes per topic. But our policy does not directly address the issue of community members who might request time with the intention of yielding that time to others who have already spoken so that their time can be extended beyond the three-minute limit. I think this is an issue that the board needs to have conversation around and consider the potential ramifications of such an allowance. We have policies in place so that we as a board have the ability to conduct our business in an orderly fashion. That being said, I believe that it is the intention of this board as a whole to encourage public participation and to hear from our community. So I think this is something that we really need to look into as we continue forward. This isn't the first time that we've heard members of the community who wish to yield time to other speakers. And I think we need to develop some clarity around how we want to proceed moving forward. This week, it was mentioned, we're heading into our nation's time of Thanksgiving. It's my favorite time of year. I love when our, when our country pauses and says thanks and expresses gratitude. And I'd like to take the opportunity to express some of my gratitude. I just want to say how thankful I am for the hard work of our students every day, for showing up and for putting forth their best. For our teachers, our administrators and our classified staff for the truly heroic efforts that you bring forth every day and night and on weekends. Yes, I see you working from home, giving up your family time for our students. I'm thankful for our families who entrust our schools with their children every day and for your willingness to share the shortfalls that you see when you see them, as well as the kudos when you see those as well. And I will forever be grateful to this community for the opportunity and honor to serve you in this capacity. It's one of the things that I am proudest of in my life and I thank you for that honor. Thank you all for being here this evening and that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. I will be very quick tonight. Congratulations to all of our reader award winners. And again, great recognition for America's Healthiest Schools, of which we have many. I also wanted to recognize several schools. This was just released earlier today. Educational Results Partnership, a nonprofit organization that applies data science to accelerate student success. California's top performing schools in partnership with local leaders and the Santa Clarita Valley Chamber of Commerce. This is the 10th year that the Educational Results Partnership has completed the honor roll list, which recognizes schools that have outperformed their peers in closing achievement gaps, particularly among higher poverty schools. This year, in the SAGIS School District, we have 12 schools that have been recognized. Tesoro del Valle, West Creek Academy, Cedar Creek Elementary, Emblem Academy, Rio Vista, Rosedale Elementary, Highlands Elementary, Charles Helmers Elementary, James Foster Elementary, Mountain View Elementary, Plum Canyon Elementary and Bridgeport Elementary. So congratulations to all of those school sites for your exceptional academic performance. We very much appreciate the efforts of all of our teachers and students at all of those schools. And then lastly, I also, along with the rest of my colleagues, want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. And with that, that concludes our board reports. We will move on to the consent calendar. And are there any items that need to be removed? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Motion by Mrs. Garibay, second by Ms. Cooper. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries with a 5 to 0 vote. With that, we move on to presentations. But before we start the presentations, we will take a five-minute break and be back here at 8:56. We are back at 8:56, and next up is a presentation on the special education review. Dr. Hawkins?
I'm going to turn this one over to Mrs. Barris and her team from Student Services. This is the results of our FICMAT study. I'm so sorry, I'm about to sneeze. I'm trying not to sneeze. I am joined tonight by Ms. Carolyn Benno. We had the pleasure of working with Ms. Benno and a team from FICMAT that we had shared a little bit before. And she's here to share a presentation about the findings tonight, and I'm looking forward to that presentation. And without further ado, Ms. Benno, I'll let you introduce yourself and take it away.
Okay, so my name is Carolyn Benno. I was a previous special education teacher, special education director, and I directed a SELPA, which is a special education local plan area in Northern California. You may remember, I had the opportunity to come out to you before you signed the study agreement to talk a little bit about our process and the way that this typically works. But I'm back tonight to share our findings. I represented a three-person team. One of the team members had expertise in school transportation and the other in special education finance. So the report that I think you've had the chance to review, as well as this presentation, is a result of all of our kind of combined thoughts on, on special education. And Michelle, did you want me to share my screen?
Uh, no, Mr. Heinlein has the presentation and he's going to share it. So you just need to tell him next slide.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Can you see it from where you are?
I, it says it's starting screen sharing. So perfect. I can see it now. Thank you very much. So if you can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So just as a reminder, because there may be some people in the audience that don't know who FICMAT is, FICMAT stands for Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistance Team. We're a state agency with a mission of assisting school districts with being financially healthy and specifically avoiding financial distress. So we do a few different things. One of them is responding in times of fiscal crisis. That is not why we were in your district. We were invited in to give a third-party kind of outside perspective on the special education program. So this is a brave, healthy thing for districts to do, and just want to applaud the staff. I think it's vulnerable to invite someone else in and ask for their opinion. And we hope that our findings and recommendations will be helpful to the district. So if you can go ahead and go the next slide. The approach that we use is to review data and documents that outline processes, policies, and procedures before we come out to the district. We came out to the district in September, and we interviewed key staff members from school sites, from the district office. Staff included principals, paraeducators, special education teachers, various related service providers, administrative support personnel, people that work in the transportation department. We really enjoyed our visit and learned a lot. So we look for themes across different groups. So we interviewed people both one-on-one and in groups. And what we do is we compile themes from those meetings. So we're not looking to identify anything that one person says, really, what is kind of the story of the district as told by individuals working in your district. So one thing to just note about the report, you probably noticed, we really focus on being succinct and focused on the findings and then our recommendations. Unfortunately, what that means is we don't mention all the great things your district is doing. I have added a couple of those things to the PowerPoint because I think there really are some celebrations I wanted to highlight, in addition to bringing up some areas where I think there are opportunities for improvement. If you can go the next slide, please. We're going to begin by talking about your special education enrollment. Okay? So if you go to the next slide, one of the things we always analyze is the percentage of students with disabilities that are served in the special education program in the district. And what we found in Saugus is very similar to what we've been seeing across the state. So since the COVID-19 pandemic, we've seen a decrease or a decline in overall student enrollment when we're looking at in your district, transitional kindergarten through sixth-grade students. And then we've seen an increase, not only in your district, but across the state, in the number of students enrolled in the special education program. There are some reasons why we think that's occurring in your district that we'll address in just a minute. But the result of that increase in special ed enrollment and decrease in overall enrollment is an increase in the percentage of students that are enrolled in the special education program in your district. So one of the things we did in your district, if you go to the next slide, is we analyze the special education enrollment at each of your district's schools. And we found some really interesting things. So what this data is showing, just to be clear, our students enrolled in special education, and this only represents students that are not in a special day class program. So what we did is we removed the enrollment of students in special day class programs from the total enrollment at a school and also the special education enrollment. And the reason we needed to do that is because special day classes are not evenly distributed across the district. So we wanted to account for that when we reviewed this data. But what we found, as you can see here, is that some of your elementary schools have almost double the percentage of students in special education at those schools. And again, I think we'll talk about some reasons for that in a minute. But this is important to monitor and try to understand what the root, root causes of this are in terms of your special ed enrollment. So we'll give some ideas that might guide that conversation, further conversation in your district in just a minute. So if you go to the next slide, I think it's also really important to compare your percentage of students in special education to others, right? And so what we did is we looked at LA County as well as California. And we looked, we tried to, to compare like enrollment. So we looked at TK through grade six enrollment in Los Angeles County and California. And we looked at non-charter school enrollment only. So we pulled out students that were in charter schools. The reason for that is sometimes charter schools, you know, enroll a different percentage of students than public schools, so traditional public schools. So we wanted to, again, create a like comparison. And what we see is that Saugus's special ed enrollment percentage is high. It is slightly lower than Los Angeles County, but Los Angeles County's is relatively high compared to most of the state. You see that statewide average in California is a couple percentage points below Saugus, and then a little bit more than that below LA County. So we know that it's something to address in Saugus and to better understand. And we have some ideas of where your district should start in its own analysis and some thoughts we have about what could help with this. So if you go to the next slide, and then the next one after that, I think it's important to understand that in special education, this is a wonderful program, right? I am a special educator. I believe strongly in the power of appropriate services for students with disabilities that need them. However, when we enroll students in special education who may not require it, there can be negative outcomes for those students. So as you might imagine, some people, when they see a special education label, they may have different expectations for that student, or the student may experience stigma. Also, when a student is in special education, they are removed from the general education program for part of their school day, which is a necessary support for students that need it. But if a student does not actually require that service, it can be a negative impact on their educational outcomes. Also, when kids are in special education during part of their day, they may lose access to their typically developing peers, which is something that is critical for their development and outcomes. In addition to these kind of student-centered factors, enrolling additional students in special education who may not need that service is also costly. And so that's another factor to kind of look at. And we believe that in your district, there are three main reasons why the percentage of students in the special ed program is higher than we would expect based on the statewide averages. And that has to do with your SST process, your student study team process, how you provide interventions for students. We call that a multi-tiered system of support, and exit procedures, or kind of graduating from the special ed program and the procedures you have around that. So I want to speak briefly about each of those. So first and foremost, the student study team process. So the law requires actually that we try to intervene and provide interventions in the general ed program prior to placing a student in special education. I think your district is doing that. However, despite some work that has been done to create a standardized SST process that is used across district schools, many of your staff reported that the SST process is not consistently used across all of the schools. And so unfortunately, what that means is that certain students at certain schools may not have access to those tiered interventions in general education prior to being assessed for special education. Staff like your SST process, I don't think that that is the problem. However, I do think there seems to be a perception among certain staff that special education is kind of the answer if a student has learning differences or needs beyond what they believe they might need to provide in their own classroom, and they advocate for that student to be assessed, and that SST process is maybe not implemented with fidelity. So these are based on reports from, from your staff. If you go to the next slide, the, the next thing I want to address is the multi-tiered systems of support. So this includes interventions and supports, you know, that are occurring in every classroom and extra things that certain students may need outside of special education. Now, this addresses both behavior, as well as academics, as well as social emotional needs of students. And your district has done a lot of work in this area, particularly post-COVID, to address learning differences and needs. There has been much work to provide training and to standardize interventions offered. And I think that this, this work is the right work. I think it just needs to continue and it needs to receive even more support and attention. There are some additional areas for training focus that we identified in the report, one of which is universal design for learning, which essentially looks at learning differences in, in students, not as a special education need potentially, but as something that classroom teachers can address, and then provides help with how they might do so. So another thing your district has been doing is working on the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Program. That work, we believe, should continue. There is positive momentum at many of the school sites with this work, and we believe that continuing to support it will have a positive impact on all student success as well as your special education rate. Finally, if you go to the next slide, in looking at exit procedures from special education, there is a meeting that is held every three years called the triennial IEP meeting. And at that meeting, the IEP team evaluates two questions. One is whether or not the student continues to qualify for special education by having a disability that is defined under the federal law called the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So that's one question. And if that question is yes, they have a disability, then we also must ask whether they actually require some kind of specialized instruction. As you can imagine, there are students with disabilities that do not and would not qualify for special education. So based on our interviews, we believe that there is a perception in the district, among certain staff at least, that, you know, if the program is working and the student is being successful, they don't want to exit the student, even if the student does not qualify and may be able to be perfectly successful on their own without that support. So there seems to be this culture that, you know, they, they don't want the student to have to leave special ed. It sounds like there is some parent pressure sometimes to not graduate a student from the program and that that pressure also may come from teachers. So it's something we think you need to evaluate further and provide some proper, some professional development in proper exit procedures from special education, because it really is evidence of the program's success, as well as the student's success, and is something that, that should be celebrated. So we believe, though, that is impacting your special ed rate. There are certain staff that even said that they never exit kids from special education regardless of whether or not the student qualifies. regardless of whether or not the student qualifies because of various reasons that I already mentioned. So we do believe that is a problem um that is uh leading to more students being in special education. And as you can imagine, um, that can have a negative impact on the student. It has a negative impact on your finances, but also we have a statewide staffing shortage. So right now, we can't find enough staff to serve the students that absolutely need a special education service. So even more importantly, we don't want students in special education who don't um qualify and have that need. So if you go to the next slide, I'm going to go ahead and transition and talk a little bit about your continuum of services, which just means how do you provide services for kids in special education? Um, we found that you provide a full continuum of services, which means there are adequate options for um different students that uh reside in your district. However, we found that these options um do not pride and provide enough access to general education. And we measured that based on a report that is called the annual performance report. This is um federal indicators of access to something called the least restrictive environment, which means getting into general education classes. And your district doesn't mean four of those six targets on the annual performance report. And so what that tells us is that some of your students um do not have as much access as is recommended for students with disabilities to their general ed peers, to general ed teachers and general ed settings. So along those lines, if you go to the next slide, we have some recommendations for you to increase kind of your um inclusive programming for students with disabilities, which you've already started to do. So you are on the right track in this um, in this area from our perspective. So one of the things that uh we would like to see is you started piloting um a program for school age students with uh kind of mild to moderate support needs is what we would consider it. It's like a learning disability. And you currently serve uh more kids uh in special day classes than other districts, I would say, across the state from what I observe. Um, so one of the programs you've been piloting is to have those students that would normally be in a specialized class um in general education with a special ed teacher support. So we would recommend you continue to slowly grow that program and increase um as these students age, because they started, I believe, in like TK and and kindergarten. Um, as they get older, kind of grow that program and increase the number of students uh with learning disabilities that are mild or moderate support needs that would have access to that type of program. And then at the preschool level, um, you have a really neat new program called collaborative preschool classes. I think it's really a model program for the entire uh state in that you are uh combining uh general ed and special ed students in a collaboratively uh cla- class that has a general ed and a special ed teacher. And you're actually um getting some revenue from these general ed students and providing exactly the type of preschool program that your special ed students um should have that is inclusive. And so that again is a model program. Um, you currently have a couple of those classes and then you have some programs that are called RISE. Uh, RISE is not an acronym, but it it is said to me in kind of like rise up. Um, i- is what I was told by staff. And that program um is a little bit unusual in that the support needs of some of the students and the types of goals that they're working on are really uh goals that in my opinion, it sounds like can be met in a in a general ed kind of preschool setting. So we suggest that you evaluate whether um those students could be served in a collaborative type of preschool class, which would help with your least restrictive environment target and provide more inclusive opportunities for um your preschool age students, which we believe will increase their um performance and their outcomes. So if you go to the next slide, um, we're going to talk a little bit about special ed staffing. So you asked us to look at the efficiency and adequacy of your special ed staffing. If you go to the next slide, I'll talk about um which areas we looked at. So we looked at the central office uh specific to special ed support. So we looked at administrative um assistants who work on the special ed program as well as special ed administrators. They don't necessarily have to have an administrative credential, but be in a organizing and support role for teachers and staff. Um, we looked at special ed teachers, special ed paraeducators and related service providers. Um, this district uh really is an exemplar for the way it uses data and a position control system to assign staff. Um, I really was impressed by uh the level of certainty the staff was able to answer questions and the quality of the data that was provided. Um, it clearly is an area of focus for your district, and I think again, it's really an exemplar. So if you go ahead and go to the next slide, I'll talk about our results. So what we did is we compared your central office staffing to that of districts that were like size and had a similar unduplicated pupil percentage, kind of as a proxy for funding. And what we found um is that you actually have fewer special ed administrator leadership positions in the central office. Um, and in addition to that, you have one that's unfilled right now. Um, so you have point five full-time equivalent staff less, and then you have one unfilled position currently. And then you, or at least at the time of fieldwork you did. And then in addition to that, you have point six six FTE, fewer administrative support positions. So these are people that work in the office and help with data and um administrative support for uh staff. So we found that you're a little lower in terms of your staffing at the central office in support of your special ed program. Um, if you go to the next slide, when we looked at uh teacher staffing, we found that it was uh well-aligned with our industry standards and um the education code requirements. Um, and that is the way that you build your staffing there. The um team you have at the administration office looks at these building blocks for staffing, and they are based on FICMAT standards already. So that's part of the reason I think these were pretty well-aligned. There was one area, eh, or two areas actually that weren't aligned. One is on this slide. Um, it is your bases program, which is a program for students that have social, emotional and behavioral needs. Um, you had one more teacher than we would expect based on the number of students. However, um, you know, it was explained that due to higher support needs of students in the program that was necessary last school year, um, due to student support needs this year, that teacher position wasn't needed. So we believe that a staffing model needs to be flexible to account for things like this. So we affirmed that this was reasonable um based on what uh was shared during interviews. If you go to the next slide, though, we do have the opposite happening for uh students in your regional autism program. So we did find that you have fewer teachers than we would expect. Um, last year at least, we looked at data from the end of last school year, not current year data. Um, and that was intentional because special ed numbers tend to grow throughout the year. So we wanted to kind of see a fixed number at the end of the year. Um, but what we found is that um you may have a need for additional uh staff in your regional autism program. Um, and so that's something we suggest you kind of further analyze. It doesn't mean you necessarily do. It just means that you uh compared to the ratio have um a fewer, fewer number of teachers than we would expect based on the number of students. Okay, so if you go to the next slide, um, we looked at paraeducator staffing. Again, we looked at staffing from the end of last school year. And you essentially use the FICMAT standards already to staff for paraeducators in your special day class programs. So we found that that was very closely aligned. There were only two classes that had an extra paraeducator assigned, where maybe we thought, well, that may not have been needed. However, um, due to student support needs, it may have been uh needed at that time. So if you go to the next slide, one area I think there can be some um room for improvement is with uh assignment of one-to-one student support. Uh, so certain paraeducators do work closely with one student. And you do have a relatively high number of paraeducators in the district um performing that kind of support compared to what I typically see in the state. Now, I want to be clear that FICMAT does not have a set industry standard. This is a decision that an IEP team makes based on an assessment called the Special Circumstances Instructional Assistance Assessment. And your district does consistently use an assessment, which is a best practice to determine the need for this support. Um, however, I think um there is uh a perception from some of your school teams that they need more support in special day classes. And so it, you know, from what we were told, it sounds like sometimes the results of this assessment uh maybe don't support uh one-on-one paraeducator, but one sometimes is assigned anyway because the team perceives there is a need for such support. So we would recommend um continuing to use this support and monitoring and providing some training around part of the um tool, which is called the daily grid, um, which is part of it where you look at the support needs of the student during different parts of the day, and you only assign support when the student needs it. And and when you do that, you can potentially even share a para across different students. But um you might be able to imagine that a one-on-one paraeducator is actually one of the most restrictive things that you can do with a student. And it can be harmful. They um have trouble often learning independence and do not interact as much with their peers when they have an adult uh with them all the time. And so um while some students do need a one-to-one paraeducator, we want to minimize that as much as possible. So um, we do believe there's some work that can be done in this area to make sure that um you're helping students develop as much independence as possible and minimizing the use of these one-to-one paras as much as possible. So if you go to the next slide, um, we also looked at related service provider staffing. These are staff such as nurses, occupational therapists, speech therapists. Um, we found that your staffing was aligned with our standards in most areas. Um, we did find that you had more school psychologists than what we would expect based on our ratios. Um, I think this is probably needed in the current context because um you are assessing many students right now compared to a typical assessment load um for initial IEPs uh for a few reasons. I think one of the reasons is uh post COVID pandemic. We have learning loss and other needs that um are heightened, right? Behavior support needs, so with that as a causing additional assessment and work for school psychologists. And in addition to that, um, you do have um, you know, this uh kind of, kind of need in this time for schools to ki- psychologists to do work that they may not have in other settings. Uh, we have a teacher shortage and um some turnover in special day class positions. And many of your psychologists are performing work, just kind of helping support those teachers um in learning classroom routines and things like that, that I'm not sure was as uh big of an issue prior to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So I think the district should look into this. Um, we're, we're, we're just kind of pointing out that this is an area where you have more staffing than what we would expect. Now, if you go to the next slide, on the flip side of that, uh, we do see that you have fewer speech and language pathologists than we would expect. Now, this standard is based on an education code standard that has been established, and it is supposed to be a maximum. Um, however, your district would want to hire more SLPs, speech and language pathologists. However, we do have a a statewide shortage, and that is impacting your ability to hire or contract for um speech and language pathologists. So based on data at the end of last year, you did not have enough staff to meet these education code standards. Um, staff were aware of that, they were actively working on this. Um, so that's something that, you know, you just needs to continue with reviewing that and working to recruit and retain um staff. So if you go ahead and go to the next slide, um, I just want to make a couple of comments on your unrestricted general fund contribution to special education. So you may already be aware that all districts in the state make a contribution to their special education program. It's an intended part of the special ed funding context in California. So you have state and financial and some local resources. Um, but they're insufficient to pay for even the most efficient programs in the state. And so all districts have to make a contribution from their general fund. And what that uh means is essentially you're using some of your, your LCFF, your state aid dollars to pay uh the excess costs of the special ed program, which are not covered with those state and federal resources. Okay, so if you go to the next slide, um, what we know is that the unrestricted general fund contribution um in your district is almost eighteen million dollars or about fifty-five percent of total costs. It's uh slated to increase just slightly this year, but it's been relatively flat over the last few years. Um, so this is something that should be monitored. Um, it's, it's difficult to compare. We used to do a comparison to other districts. However, because of coding differences and how special ed expenditures and revenues can be accounted for, it can be difficult to compare. But what I can tell you is this is comparable to um other districts in in the state um in general. If you go ahead and go to the next slide, uh, we also looked at the school transportation program. Um, as you probably know, you have an external transportation service provider, so meaning you contract with someone for services. And um what you might not be aware of is that school transportation was flat funded um under the LCFF until recently. Okay, so the Budget Act of two thousand twenty-two um increased your school transportation funding to try to account more for an expenditure-based reimbursement kind of to districts. And you actually received um in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, almost three hundred fifty thousand dollars in additional school transportation funding. Um, so we have some recommendations just around maximizing those uh the coding so that you make sure you capture all reimbursable expenditures. But your district was already doing an excellent job with that. Um, if you go to the next slide, just a little more information. Um, in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, so a couple of years ago, right when that funding shift happened, you were spending, you know, about ninety-five hundred dollars per student for school transportation. Um, you know, this year, that's projected to increase quite a bit. Um, that is due to the transportation service providers' costs going up quite a bit. This is absolutely normal and what we're seeing unfortunately across the state. Um, one of the things that the Budget Act of two thousand twenty-two reinstated was a data uh publishing requirement. And that will enable you in future years to compare this amount per student to other districts. So I think that will be important to do once that data becomes available. It's not available yet. And then if you go to the next slide, um, in specifically looking at special ed transportation, um, it can be assigned as a related service to students that require it. And what we found is that uh based on what we observe about the state, you have about uh the right percentage basically of students that are offered and receiving special ed transportation. So what that would indicate is that your IEP process is um, is looking at the transportation and whether it's required um in an adequate way and assigning it appropriately to the students that need it. So I think that is another positive. So if you go ahead and go to the next slide, um, I just want to uh give you the opportunity to ask questions. I know that was a lot of information and I again, just want to thank staff uh for doing such a fabulous job compiling data and um working with us on understanding your special ed program.
Thanks, Ms. Benno. Before I open it up to questions, I just wanted to share, um, it it was a lot of information. And I'm sure people are wondering, okay, this is great, you know, so what now what, right? What's next? And so this information um is going to be shared with our task force that we've already had going in the background. We've asked Ms. Benno to come out and um present this information to the task force, and we've actually extended that next meeting so we can do some work um with these recommendations along with the work that we have already been doing. So our goal is to take this report, um, go through it thoroughly so people understand, and then take a look at the recommendations and um ultimately make some uh decisions to the board. Yeah, February-ish, March-ish next year. I'll turn it over to Mr. Trunki for questions.
Thank you. We will start with Ms. Cooper.
I don't know if these are questions or more of my comment. Um, the training for general ed, that was actually pointed out by the teachers in the public comment earlier this evening as well. And that one struck me because, again, going back to my son, keeping in mind, that's over twenty-five years ago. But um, it's a silly example, but he would, you know, tap his pencil, which is pretty standard for ADD kids. And he would get in trouble for it. And I said, I'll just give him a rubber pencil so it doesn't make noise. And I was disappointed that the teacher didn't know that. It seemed so simple to me. So, so the training would be wonderful. Um, I didn't even know, it it didn't occur to me that kids would exit um special education. Cause I mean, it seems like if you have a disability, like it doesn't just go away. But I guess that means that they learn how to function without additional support. Is that what, is that how that happens?
That is just right. And um, I'll give you an example where maybe a disability does kind of go away um to a an extent at least. So a student may have a speech and language impairment and articulation error in their speech. They may work with a speech therapist for several years and then no longer have that error that is impacting their speech. And in that case, the student could be um exited or graduate from the special education program. That's just one example.
Cool. And then I know that we are required to put the kids on the least restrictive environment. And I know that juggling laws and waiting periods are like kind of a nightmare, but it And I know that juggling laws and waiting periods are like kind of a nightmare, but it, some of the behavior problems that we've been hearing about, it almost seems like, like they should be in a more restrictive environment. How do you balance that? Or is that, I mean, maybe that's not a question to ask you, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think anytime you change the service model, there's training needed and there is going to be. I, I think that certain kids will behave better in a general education environment and others will need additional supports to meet the expectations of a general ed environment. So I think it, it can be both.
Okay. That was it. Thank you very much for the information.
Mrs. Garibay.
I agree with everything that Mrs. Cooper said, that, you know, the training side of things is really important. And it's not just expecting people to know how to deal with situations, but really providing that training so they know how to handle it. The other thing that was interesting to me was just the discussion about that we have more para educators than we actually need. Because I think that's kind of come up a couple of times, right? That we actually need more support in the classroom. So that, that was just interesting to me. So I'd love to hear more about it as we go through, you know, the, the, with this group and kind of discussing next steps or whatever. So that's it for me. Thank you. That was a great presentation.
Mrs. Grease.
I'm also curious about the para educators. That comment as well, just we have too many, but we hear that we don't have enough. And then the comment about not having enough within the RAP programs as well, not having enough support there. So I'm just, I'm more curious to know in the future, what are we doing with this data? Knowing that in some of the areas we need more support, but we keep hearing that there's a shortage. So what is the solution to offer to our teachers? The support that they need if there's a consensus that we don't have the support available to us. So I'm more interested in the action around the data. The data was great. I think it was perfect timing with some of the comments that were happening tonight in public session. So coincidence or not, I don't know. But I, I do just want to make sure that there is some real action steps around what we heard tonight in public comment and what we're seeing in the data. And when that is going to happen, because things tend to move really slowly in this district and this is something that I don't think should move slow. So, thank you.
Mrs. Barry, sir, Dr. Hawkins, did you want to address any of that?
Well, I, I think, you know, to, to address your question, the, the data that we have for staffing was at the end of the twenty three, twenty four school year. And specifically you brought up the example of the, of the RAP program. And so last year, we did, weren't able to hire a teacher. We were looking for one last year and we wanted to add another class. We were, we were successful in doing that this year. So the recommendation last year, looking at the, the ratio, the teacher to student ratio, meaning that we needed to add a teacher, we were able to do that this year. So I think that though that type of a thing that you're speaking about, that action was, I guess, immediate in a sense, but that was corrected or rectified, whatever, this year. Some of the other staffing ratios with speech therapists or this resource specialist, that's something that we have an ongoing discussion about when we take a look at numbers of students who have qualified or are qualifying. In fact, we just had a lengthy discussion in cabinet today about that. And then the other issue or question that you guys have talked about with classroom sta- aides versus, you know, what we consider one to one or environmental learning support. I think that is a more complex concern. And some of the, the comments that people have brought up tonight aren't necessarily students that already have qualified for special ed services. So I think we're looking at, you know, the, the data that's being presented tonight about we're, we're having too many like one to ones specifically or for students that have already qualified for special education. But many of the examples that teacher brought, teachers have brought up tonight, students are either not qualified for special education or in the process of qualifying.
Mr. Watson.
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Benno. Ms. Grease, you actually kind of hit the nail on the head of, of quite a conundrum. We are hearing from staff that, that we don't have enough support. We're hearing from this report that according to averages, we may have slightly more than, than is typical and then we're experiencing shortages. I'm going to ask your forgiveness because we're speaking my language now and you all know I speak a lot. Ms. Benno, um, do you have any data on how our special education enrollment compares to other elementary school districts in our area? We saw how it compares to the state and the county. Did you gather any specific to our area?
I don't, but I know that's something that Darcy could get from the S L P. I would imagine that you probably have some other districts in your S L P that might be similar. But I'm sure you could, you could gather that. It's available on Data Quest if you were to identify certain districts.
It should be pretty easy. Thank you.
Benno, can I, can I add to that? Because I, I kind of think you shared with us the, the concern that staff had shared with you about the fact that people moved to our district for special education, hence we would have more. And I found that data fascinating that, that, how, how that works. So can you expand on that? Because I think that leads into what, or aligns with what Mr. Watson was asking.
Yeah. So interestingly, most staff, I would say, when we asked them about your special ed rate, had stories that they told about families that had specifically moved here for the special education program. Apparently there's quite a positive reputation. And after meeting with some of your staff, I'm not surprised that, that there is a positive reputation. I mean, many staff, very well spoken, very knowledgeable and, and really just, and you know, endorsed your district very well. So while we didn't have kind of a mechanism to validate that, I, I caution you only that I do think these other factors that I mentioned earlier are also definitely in play. But you may also have an issue where certain families are moving, requesting inter-district transfer and or, you know, maybe doubled up in some cases, experiencing some housing insecurity in our in your district due to that reason and have a child in special ed. So I, I do agree that, that does appear to be part of this puzzle as well.
And, and I concur. I've had the opportunity to meet with a decent number of our special educators and they are amazing. Dr. Hawkins, don't we also serve students in S D C classes who don't necessarily either move or transfer to our districts, but reside in other districts, but because we offer the programs that they qualify for are, are moved into our district?
You mean because of the S L P?
Yes.
I, I don't know, Mrs. Berry set, answer that a little bit more.
I think maybe, are you referring to our regionalized autism program where we serve students from other districts that may not be our own students?
Correct.
Yes, we, the program that we actually have two in a sense. One doesn't necessarily count towards enrollment, but is our early start program. So we are a regionalized program for the, the district. The babies get their first start, their first taste of education with providers from Saugus. And then the other program that we have is our regionalized autism program. Although we are a major, I guess, consumer, most of those students in the program are, are our own resident students.
And then you do have some students that kind of on the flip side of that leave your district to go to other districts. There aren't very many though, so.
That's, that's a very good point. So you mentioned that our special education enrollment was lower than the county average, but higher than the state average. And you also showed that the district saw a comparative spike in special education enrollment, given that our overall enrollment had declined over the last half dozen years or so. But our special education enrollment has increased. Do you know, has the, either the county or the state or other areas experienced similar spikes or is this atypical?
No, it's very typical post pandemic and I think there's different reasons for that. For example, I often hear that the S S T process is not implemented consistently and then we find evidence of that. However, one thing that seems to be a little more unusual here is we did hear quite a bit about students not leaving the program, even if they didn't qualify due to parent pressure or educator pressure or just a perception that the program is working and they want the child to continue. So that is a little unusual. It's not that I've never heard that. It's not that we've never found that, but that's a little more unusual and I think it's cultural. I think there's a lot of pride in your program and I think that's a good thing. We just want to make sure it's supporting the right students.
Yeah, I, I did notice that in your presentation as well and I'll address that in, in, in just a minute because it does concern me also. Now, you mentioned the possibility of misidentification or over identification. I'm sure your study didn't have the opportunity to analyze specific cases, right? Where you've got X number, right? That would take just a tremendous amount of time. You'd have to immerse yourselves, but you can only use comparative.
There is a recommendation though, that if your district agrees, this is a concern to have an expert witness or an attorney do some case file review with your teams. So a strategy I've used and I've seen used is to have someone like that and come and look at your actual assessment reports and find one, for example, where a student didn't qualify for special ed, but they were put in special ed. Or one where they didn't qualify and they weren't put in special ed. And you redact all the information that would identify the student, the school, the provider that did the assessment because you don't want to put anyone on the spot. And then you have discussions about that. And I think that can be really powerful to use your own district's data. And I think it even necess- it's not even a huge cost to do that. It's more the time to bring staff together.
Yeah, I, I certainly understand. For all the reasons that you mentioned, I am a staunch advocate and, and I think anybody who attends our board meetings with any regularity knows I, I'm a huge advocate for schools being slow to identify and including students who are identified in the general education classes as much as possible. I've studied a lot of different inclusion models. I've taught myself in at least four different inclusion models over my career. I've taught other educators how to do so. We heard tonight and I believe that we need to provide our, our general education staff, both certificated and classified with training on, on how to include students who, who have special education needs. I think when we do that, we might be able to lower the rate of any over identification or over staffing. But we also have to recognize that we're living in an entirely new educational era. And it changed quickly and radically. The fir- the, the information age is changing us as humans and our children are absolutely included in that change. Mrs. Garibay recommended a book to this board earlier this year that the district then provided us. I'm reading the book now and enjoying it and I hope my colleagues are reading it as well. But it's leaving me with more questions than solutions. And you know, it's no doubt that COVID shook this generation to its core. And not just the students who were enrolled during the time of the shutdown. It, it's an incredible phenomenon that teachers, psychologists and pediatricians continue to report. That being said, this, this notion that we never exit a special education student really worries me as well. That's, that's not what special education supports are there for. And so we, we again, need continued training for our staff. We need study by our district staff from our TOSSAs to our directors, to our cabinet and even this board. We all need to, to be all hands on deck in, in studying this issue. So I want to thank you for your work and I think we can definitely improve in Saugus clearly. But I think we need to be cautious as well. We can't compare twenty nineteen norms with twenty twenty four realities. So Dr. Hawkins, Ms. Berry, please keep us closely informed as this task force dives deep into the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Watson, you are a tough act to, to follow because you're so knowledgeable on these issues. My, my first question on the report, and this is just more for general knowledge for a lot of people. And I know that you, you get tagged with this name, the fiscal crisis and management assistance team. But I know that a, a great portion of the work, I think it's something upwards of seventy percent of the work you do is not about fiscal crisis. It's about helping districts be more effective and, and better managers of their processes. Is, is that about right?
You know, I don't know the exact percentage, but yes, absolutely. We actually focus on professional learning as well as management assistance. And that's what this project is. And it is definitely more than half of our work. I don't know if it's seventy percent, but it's, it's what we want to do and what we hope to do the most. And it is what we do the most.
Right. And even though, you know, fiscal is, is, you know, you're really part of your name. You know, you have a special education background and, and maybe you can jump into that, describe that a little bit. And the background of some of the other team members that you had work on this project.
Sure. So my background is the program. So I started my career as a special ed teacher. I worked at a high school, both R S P and special day class teacher. I was a vice principal at that high school. So I understand kind of that perspective of the principals and kind of the lens that they look through when they're making some of these decisions along with I E P teams. I was a director for five years in a district about the size, but a K twelve district in Northern California. I was the people services director, so I did special ed and people services. So attendance, child welfare, those types of things. And then I was the S L P director for four years before becoming the assistant soup of ed services for a county office. I've been doing this work for FICMAT for four years and I also do professional learning for FICMAT. The other members of the team, so one of them is a fiscal expert. So my expertise is not finance, it's the program side. She is a fiscal expert. So she worked for L A County Office of Ed doing A B twelve hundred oversight. So fiscal oversight of districts throughout L A. So pretty big, big job. And then she has experience as a C B O at both small and large districts and at the S L P. So Colleen Patterson is her name and she is a state, state expert in special ed finance. And then the transportation consultant that we used on our team is named Tim Purvis. He has extensive experience throughout the state as a director of transportation. And he has his own consulting business and then FICMAT uses him on all of our transportation studies because he truly is the best. He looks at special ed and general ed transportation. But as you know, we do very little general ed transportation across the state now. Most of it is special ed, but he has a lot of experience working both with districts that run their own transportation programs as well as who use transportation service providers like your district does. So it was a three member team that worked on this report and interviewed your staff.
Thank you for that. Obviously my colleagues have all brought up the para educator ratios and, and one to one staffing. And so I won't belabor all, all of that. But one of the things, and, and excuse me, I'm actually going, I went through the, the full report. And so this is not based on just the presentation. But one of the things that I noticed under the para educator section was the, the need that every I E P that, that calls for a one to one aid has some sort of a, what they call a fade plan?
Fade plan or goals for independence. So helping the student not become completely dependent on the adult to prompt them and guide them through the day. With the exception of students that have significant medical issues and that's the reason they have a one on one. That's not the majority of most students that have a one on one in your district. It's usually for behavior support is what, what the data showed and what we were told. And so it would be that those students learn to prompt themselves, look at the teacher for prompts and their peers. In addition to using the para educator for support. It's a standard practice that districts should be engaged in so that students can learn to function essentially over time without the para educator.
Right. And then on the, the S L Ps, of course, you mentioned the, the shortage that exists statewide. What are our districts looking to do to help solve that problem? Right? We can't all hire the same available, few available S L Ps.
Yes. You bring up a great, a great question. So I've seen various strategies. I mean, I think always doing salary comparisons is important. You're competing for staff, right? But from what your staff shared, and this may or may not be accurate, but you're somewhat isolated a little bit in Saugus in that many staff shared that they want to work in Saugus because they live here and they, they don't want to go somewhere else to work. And so I think it is also about. I think it is also about um, you know, the support you provide for staff to retain employees. Uh, many districts do a hiring incentive for SLPs, um, for example, like a $3,000 signing bonus. Um, I like to see those delivered over time, so not all upfront. Maybe after the first year, they get 1,500. After the second, they get another 1,500. Those are becoming more and more common across the uh, state, so um, those are a couple strategies I've seen used. Um, another strategy, so there is a um, a speech and language assistant kind of role that some districts have. Some of those uh, people try to kind of grow into their own therapists. Um, I haven't seen as much success with that, honestly. I think it is about your ability to recruit and then retain staff. Um, and I think typically the salary being competitive and um, potentially a hiring bonus could be things um, that can be attractive to candidates.
Thank you. Um, one of the recommendations uh, was about um, non-certificated um, employees, paraeducators um, and professional development, and I think it was even brought up um, as part of uh, from the podium um, by one of our our speakers. Um, and this, I guess, is an internal question. Um, how how often do we have those types of trainings, and do we track it, and and is there a a way that we can get any data on on that?
Are you talking about classified staff when you say parent?
Yes, yes.
I would say officially, we have at least one, well, the one training during our certificated um, training in November that we open up to our our para-staff um, and in a variety of topics. But but this year, specifically with our para-staff, um, we have a a little bit of a a newer model or different allocation of our behavior specialists um, at the school sites, and so there's an intervention team comprised of our behavior specialists, our school social worker, and our school psychologist. They are the intervention team. And on Wednesdays, um, they are to get together with the para-staff at their school site and train. It it depends, because some um, of them have a uh, somebody on-site every um, every day, and they're not sharing, like our our sites with our our higher needs students, Mountain View, Bridgeport, um, that that type of site, and Emblem. And then other school sites share their behavior specialists, and so they go back and forth. Um, you heard a little bit about that tonight. So on those Wednesdays, they they're, they have a training schedule where they're they're training their sites on those days. And there's topics that they're going over as well as on-the-job training, so it's it's not necessarily meant to be this big overarching. You know, I'm going to train you on pr- prompt hierarchy today and all of that. It could be. But also, what's happening in the classroom? What are the, what are the tools you need right now? So it's more of like meant to be more of in-the-now training, and um, that is something new that we we um, started this year. The challenge of training our para-professionals is um, there's many different start and end times. Um, some of them have childcare obligations. A lot of people working in schools is very appealing because they get out right when their kids get out, and so they have other obligations. We do have a lot of students, I will say, uh, three of my own family members that our students are, you know, employed in the school district, and so you're competing with different school schedules. So trying to find that perfect time to get everybody together to train is challenging. But we are trying to tackle that and doing the best we can with that this year and and seeing how that goes.
And I assume that'll be a part of your uh, future meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, another question, um, Ms. Benno, um, I noticed that um, you had mentioned that we are overrepresented um, in the let, with Latinx um, students and and uh, by several percentage points. Um, and you referred to a a brief from the, from AXA, the disproportionality of Latinx students in special education. Um, could you maybe talk a little bit about that study and and the 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 best way to try and implement strategies around what's in that report?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I think the most important thing about that report is that it honors that there are different root causes that could cause an overrepresentation of students that are Latinx in special education. So for example, um, it could be that, um, and I'm not saying this is what's happening in your district, so please let me be clear on that. But certain districts do not have um, English language development programs that are adequate for kids that have um, language acquisition needs, and so because they don't have those programs, those kids are placed in special education, even though they don't have a disability. So that would be one example of a root cause. A different root cause may be um, training around uh, assessment practices for English learners. Um, and I'm not saying again that that's your district, but it's something your district needs to look into more, and that brief talks about the common root causes and helps a a district think through how they might investigate what is most impacting um, the identification in their own district.
Thank you for that. Um, and I I think a few of my colleagues have touched on it um, about the exit strategies, and when you talk about best practices, um, is it fair to say that a foundational goal for every single IEP that we enter into should include an exit strategy as as a foundational tool?
No. I would say that m- many, if not most, students in special ed, uh, me- no, I wouldn't say most. Many are going to be in special ed due to the um, significance of the disability throughout their school age years, but there are many students that can be exited from the program or graduate from the program. Um, I can't really give percentages, but uh, you know, in many districts, you know, about a quarter of the students exit the program, but then other students are identified, right? So it's not that um, in a given year, for example. So there are particularly in men- elementary schools, some students that will exit the program each year. But it it wouldn't, it wouldn't, in my opinion, be a goal that all students would try to be working towards exiting because certain students are going to need that support throughout their school age years. What we want to think, I think, focus on is making sure that we use that two-part test whenever we're looking at eligible views for special ed. So do they actually meet the criteria of having a disability, and do they require a specialized service? So I think that should be the focus, not on trying to work towards exiting.
But then, does a strategy about exit only occur then at the triennial, or is it, should it be a part of the discussion at the very beginning?
Yeah, I I mean, I think you can let parents know at the, and students know at the very beginning that um, you know, the process is that we evaluate at least every three years to see if students continue to meet criteria. Now, a team can assess a student sooner than that um, to determine if they continue to meet the criteria to be in special ed. But um, but I think it's it's uh, it's hard to say who's going to be successful enough to exit. Um, and there are certain disabilities where it's probably not realistic. So I think it's important, uh, the team will meet annually at least to see how the student is doing, and then they can determine whether um, an assessment prior to that three-year mark is going to be appropriate for a student.
Okay, I I I could keep going, but I know the the hour is getting late, so um, I I will end my questions there. Thank you for a great report, and and I look forward to seeing how we continue to review the data uh, in this report and and the committee we're going forward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, Ms. Benno, and staying late.
Yeah.
I appreciate you.
Is it everybody okay to continue? Mr. Watson, Mrs. Grease? Okay, so we will move on to uh, item five, Education Services. Item A, approve the Saugus Summer Steam Camp and Extended School Year Program and dates for the summer of 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Ms. Cooper? And we'll do the second by Mr. Watson.
Fair enough.
Um, any, well, uh, Mr. Clement? Okay, questions or comments?
I went to a, uh, an hour or two of the the summer school last year. It was so fun. And then we're learning too. But mostly, it was fun.
A- all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes with a five-to-zero vote. Onto Student Support Serv- oh, nothing for Student Support Services. Onto Human Resources. Oh, seven A is, we have pulled, so we're on to Business Services. Item eight A, approve 2024-25 First Interim Financial Report. Do we have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Garibay. I will second. Mr. Heinlein?
Well, that's the moment everyone's been waiting for. Um, I am trying to pull. Okay, Roseanne is in. Uh, and she is not with us this evening. Uh, she's joining us via Zoom um, from her cohort meeting for the Business Executive Leadership Program um, that is put on by Casbo. Uh, she's at the CBO Symposium right now in Burlingame. Uh, why is she there? Well, Roseanne is a new CBO. So she is the new CBO of Palmdale Aerospace Academy. Uh, so this is her last presentation. She wanted to make sure she uh, was with us. Um, it's going to be a hard um, a hard road ahead of us as we bring in somebody else to hopefully fill her shoes. I think you've been here nine years, right, Roseanne?
Yeah, I'm in my tenth year.
Um, it, she's been critically important in making sure our financial reports are accurate as well as all of the numerous categorical reporting that we do. Um, so it's hard to see her go. Um, but super exciting and stoked for her as she has achieved one of her career goals and will uh, move on in that position. So, Roseanne, thank you very much. Uh, and with that, I am going to start our first interim presentation. And we will go pretty quick. Not because I want to.
And I just want to say something at the end.
Okay, so here's our calendar. We always share uh, for each of our presentations, and typically what we're sharing tonight, we don't do until December. Uh, but you know, with Roseanne's help and our new tool, uh, we're able to uh, complete this project uh, earlier than 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 typically is is normal. So uh, with the first interim reporting, the most important thing that happens this evening is the board is going to certify that the district is in a positive certification, uh, meaning that we can meet all of our obligations for the current year. And the next two years, uh, we'll look at our uh, year-end fund balance, and it's everything uh, that we knew as of the end of October. Uh, a couple uh, assumptions that changed um, that are significant for us is our enrollment. Uh, we were planting, planning at budget time, those are are the blue bar graphs, uh, to have 9,120 students this year. We ended up uh, with 9,191 on our census day, which is uh, in the beginning of October. Uh, and the big change there, or the big surprise, was that 52 more students uh, in TK uh, came to our district. Uh, so that increase of 71 students is then respected in the future years, so we just add that to our future year enrollment projections. Uh, the other uh, difference, which isn't a good one, was a decline of 1% in our uh, unduplicated percent uh, count. Uh, that is uh, really determined by household income surveys that go out. Uh, and because of how the funding formula is structured, that 1% is not immediately felt. It goes down uh, over a three-year period. Uh, so with that said, uh, this is a look at our unrestricted revenue and the variance uh, since the budget was presented. Uh, the big difference here is lottery, uh, lottery funding increased from $177 per student to $191. Uh, and then uh, we are projecting um, to get a little bit more for our transportation uh, reimbursement from the state, which we kind of heard about in the FICMAT uh, presentation. Uh, moving forward, uh, here's the changes in our unrestricted expenditures. Uh, a lot of uh, big swings here. Uh, but one thing to remember is at budget time, our budgets uh, reflect being fully staffed. Uh, as the year goes on, we know that there'll be vacancies, and so we either decrease budgets or have to increase uh, budgets. Uh, we have uh, added um, when this report was created, uh, two additional campus supervisors. Uh, we also now have a 1% salary increase uh, in these numbers. Uh, and this uh, year, we're back to having 261 workdays for full-time classified employees. Uh, last year was 260, so we had to add another year uh, or day to the salary schedule. Uh, and really, the most important part from my perspective on this slide is line C, which will tell us if we're deficit spending or not deficit spending. So uh, we are in the positive of 1.1 million dollars. Uh, but since we did this, uh, we know uh, that as of uh, today, uh, we've added two additional special ed paraeducators. Their yearly cost is 45,000, so that's $90,000, so we got to subtract that from that number. Uh, we added a uh, or will add a BCBA. That's another 160,000 a year. Uh, we added a RSP teacher. That's another $120,000 uh, per year. And we added a regular teacher, which is also $120,000 per year. Uh, so we got to keep those.
Positive.
Uh, yeah, we got to keep those uh, uh, changes uh, in mind uh, when we do look at uh, line C. Most of those costs, though, will not uh, be seen on the unrestricted side. They'll just increase our contribution. So when we look at unrestricted and our fund balance, uh, you see that uh, our commitments increased, and again, commitments represent everything uh, above the 10% uh, cap that is not active this year. But instead of changing every single year based on if uh, the cap is active or not active, I think it's probably best if we present the numbers in a consistent manner uh, so that uh, folks can get used to uh, seeing that. So again, uh, that uh, number that goes from 2.4 million to 4.5 million does represent the amount that we have that is above our 10% uh, reserve. Move, moving forward to unrestricted, um, or I'm sorry, restricted revenue, uh, there's also some big swings here. The biggest uh, is because of Esri 3 dollars. Uh, we planned on only carrying forward 186,000 of those dollars. Uh, we actually carried over uh, a little bit more than a million, which we have spent um, as of the end of September. Uh, there is also a reduction in the uh, Extended Learning Opportunity Program from the state. Uh, that was about a four or $500,000 reduction there. And then we got um, some additional special ed dollars, and those are uh, what you see uh, coming in uh, into the other local uh, revenues category. When we look at staffing here, so all the staffing that I mentioned, they would actually be uh, added onto uh, the budget on on this slide. Um, we have uh, here, a lot of those uh, positions not being able to be hired, but then uh, we need to hire an agency person, so you'll see a reduction in the certificated salaries and employee benefits, and then those dollars are put into uh, services and other operating expenses. So that's why you see the big negatives there, and then the large increase uh, in the services. Um, the other thing that we have to remember is that prior year or last year's carryover dollars are now in the budget. And how we budget is that those carryover dollars are all spent this year. So what that does to us uh, is um, we see that we are uh, decreasing uh, our our dollars that that are restricted. Uh, when we put all of it together, uh, again, that uh, when we presented the original budget, uh, a total uh, reserve of 11.78%. Uh, now we're we're uh, projecting a reserve of around 13.21%. So how are our other funds doing? So here's uh, the other funds that uh, what we always show of uh, special significance is highlighted. That's Fund 17. Uh, those dollars are always calculated in uh, what our reserve percentage is. Uh, so that's um, the current look of of uh, all the other funds. Moving on to multi-year projections. We have a COLA in these figures that we hope we will get, right? So next year's two point nine eight percent, the year after that, three percent. Everything else is very standardized. And I did print out all of our assumptions that we will send to the county office that I'll pass out if you would like to see them. But we always remove any carryover amounts when we look into the future for the revenue. And then we increase all state programs by the COLA. And then we make any other adjustments that we may know. When we look at our expenditures, we still are using the historical increase that we've seen in the recent past of certificated salaries increasing by one point six seven percent, classified salaries increasing by about two point two percent. And then the changes in STIRS, which over the next two years, the amount that we have to put into the state teachers retirement system, that percentage remains the same. And then PERS will increase a little bit. And let's see here. Got this video bar down here. So in the, in the future, right? If we look at line C two, these other commitments, again, that's the dollar amount that's above the 10% reserve. And lastly, when we look into the future, if that COLA stands, we're looking at next year having a fifteen point two six percent COLA. I'm sorry, reserved. And then the, the out year seventeen point two six percent. Lake will always suggest that we, we share a potential alternative scenario. And this year, I wanted to share the potential of COLA not being three percent, right? So we know that cash collections are coming in, you know, pretty well. But that doesn't really equate to a COLA, right? So COLA is, is attached to a government price factor, and it's very formulaic. So if COLA for next year is just like this year, which is one point zero seven, our reserve will drop from fifteen point two six percent to thirteen point eight seven percent. And if the year after that is also one around one percent, we're gonna see that reserve drop from seventeen point two six percent to fourteen point four percent. With that, any questions? Ms. Cooper?
Thank you for the lovely presentation. Roseanne, no one can fill your shoes. I'm gonna miss you.
Mrs. Garibay?
Thank you.
Mrs. Grease?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Watson?
Mr. Heinlein, thank you for the report. I don't have any questions, Roseanne. Just thank you so much. Want to thank you for your service to our district. You will be sorely missed. I think you know that. But it's a well-deserved achievement. I know Palmdale Aerospace Academy well, and they're doing great things. And they're getting a great new CBO.
Thank you.
Mr. Heinlein, thank you for a great report. I was reading Ed Cal sometime last week, and I saw the position being floated, and my heart skipped a beat. Roseanne, I immediately had to call the district office and find out what was going on. And I heard about your promotion and the great things that are in your future. So congratulations and best of luck to you. And don't be a stranger. Come back and visit, please.
Thank you. Can I say real quick, though? I do want to thank Saugus Union School District. Dr. Lucid took a chance on me, and I will always be grateful for that. And I've had an incredible mentor, Nick Heinlein. He knows everything school business from all his experience, and he's taught me so much. So I'm gonna take all the things I've learned from him and will be using at Palmdale Aerospace Academy. And I will be calling him for advice every now and then. So thank you, and I'll miss everybody.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries with a five to zero vote on to item eight B, approval to declare certain district-owned property as surplus. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cooper, second by Mrs. Garibay? Any questions or discussion?
Can't believe we still have a fax machine.
Well, now they're just all in one unit, so.
Mr. Heinlein, did you want to say anything?
No, that's all.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with a five to zero vote on to general functions. First, we have a discussion of the proposed twenty twenty-five calendar of regular and special board meetings and the governance calendar. Dr. Hawkins?
So it's that time of year again. We do this every year right before the, we finalize the calendar for the organizational meeting. So as was indicated, there are a couple of meetings that I think aren't quite working for us as far as business is concerned and the other business we have to do. With January fourteenth and April eighth, with those being break periods, I think those should be meetings that we're not having. However, August twelfth is the day before school starts. And while we could still have a meeting, we would all miss all of the back-to-school nights. And I think that's really important for us to be able to attend. So the difference between July twenty-second and the twenty-sixth seems fine. We'll go back up here to the two green areas, March and May. We started following kind of a second and fourth pattern. We can adjust where we need to. If we follow the March eleventh pattern for second and fourth, or the May thirteenth for second and fourth, we run into problems with our layoff schedule and our noticing of staff because of the timeframe that has to be done once the board approves it. So we've also put on there that having it on March fourth instead of the eleventh and March, or May sixth instead of the thirteenth would probably be better for us to complete those processes if needed. I just know that it sometimes conflicts with work schedules. So we need some direction there. Do you want me to do the rest of it?
Um, yeah, I think you hit on the purples and the greens. How about the yellows?
Okay, so we always try to honor as many of the, you know, high holy days as we can and not impact different pieces. September twenty-third is the day after the beginning of Rosh Hashanah. Again, it's that whole second and fourth idea. So the sixteenth could be a possibility. And then when you look at December sixteenth, that's the organizational meeting. Typically, that has to be done. Let me see if I can say it correctly. The, after the second Friday of the month of December, in a year when there's an election, fifteen days one, one way or the other. And you, but if it's not an election, you have to have it done by the twentieth. So since next year is not an election where we have any board seats or anything up and available, we could move this meeting to the ninth in order to have our organizational meeting and not be impacting Hanukkah. So that's, and, and we had to get some information from the registrar's office and things today. So that's why that's on there that way. So those are all the recommendations from staff.
All right. Why don't we start with Ms. Cooper? Do you want to address any of those dates or possible changes or conflicts?
I'm fine with March fourth and March sixth and September sixteenth and December eighth. October fourteenth is gonna suck, but that's okay. I can handle it.
Mrs. Garibay?
Mr. Trunki, is Ms. Garibay's microphone on?
It is not.
Thanks for catching that. So I was saying that I actually preferred the first and third of the month. But I understand that, you know, obviously we have to go forward. So my meeting, so I, for my job, I have to be at a meeting the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. Those meetings are in the earlier in the day. But I can't guarantee that I would not, like, something wouldn't come up that would take longer or that would not restrict me from coming here. So I just want to throw that out there.
So I'm sorry. My understanding was we had to do the sec, these meetings on the second and fourth. We used to do them on the first and third when you first got on the board, and then we switched it.
No, my meetings are the second and the fourth.
Okay, well, I'm happy to take back the calendar and adjust it for.
First and third.
I thought you had mentioned to me earlier that the times of the meetings have changed.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying.
So they're earlier.
So that's what I'm saying. So it's not a conflict right now. It shouldn't be a conflict, but there may be times where if that meeting goes long, I may have an issue. But that may not happen. So I'm just throwing it out there to let you know.
I think we changed to the second and fourth because there were so many conflicts with the city council meetings. And sometimes people wanted to.
Are the second and fourth.
We, we cha, we we changed a lot of meetings last year. So I'll just, I'll take board direction on whatever you want to do. We, we patterned it after our final version that we went with for the rest of the school year. So that's why they're chosen for the dates that they are. But if, if the boards would prefer that it be the first and third, I'm happy to change them back.
Did you have any comments on?
The other days are fine. No.
Okay. Mrs. Grease?
I need just a little bit more time to align with my work. I do know March fourth is not going to work. But other than that, I just need like a day or two. And I also just, I just want to know, you know, we, we do have, I just want to make sure that we're all respectful of everyone's time and know that we do have, you know, five people on this board that have full-time jobs and children. And I just want to make sure that we're all respectful of, we all want to be here. We were elected to be here. We weren't lucky enough to, to get here. So I'm just, you know, I'm trying to address last meeting's comments a little bit that we all have full-time working jobs, and we're all doing our best and making sure that we're aligning to a calendar that we're setting a year in advance. And some things, you know, sometimes things happen. And I think we just need to be respectful about it.
Mr. Watson?
I'm good with all of the dates proposed. When it comes to March eleventh versus March fourth, I actually prefer March fourth as I have a conference scheduled on March eleventh. I will, like I am this evening, be able to attend remotely. So I could be good either way. And yeah, other than that, I'm good with all the dates proposed.
Okay. The, Jane, and, and Mr. Watson, please jump in if you have an opinion. My only thought on the January fourteenth meeting is it might be something we may need depending upon the pace of the mid-year evaluation.
I cannot attend the fourteenth.
Do you have a conflict on the fourteenth?
Yeah, I didn't mention anything because it had delete on there. So I didn't even talk about it.
Okay.
If you needed to have a special meeting to finish it, you, you guys can schedule a special meeting, but this is for a business meeting.
I, I'm talking about the date, not whether it's a special meeting or, or a board meeting, just the date at this point. Because it may be something that's needed, may not be needed. But Mr. Watson, do you have any thought? I mean, obviously, we haven't started the process yet. So it's kind of hard to figure out when it will end or if we would potentially need the date or not.
Sure. And we never know what, what, what could arise in, in our discussions. But I am certainly hopeful and expectant that we should be able to finalize Dr. Hawkins' mid-year evaluation before mid-January. If we do need extra time, we can always look at potentially reserving some, some closed session time during one of our regularly scheduled meetings. Or we can, like Dr. Hawkins said, we could schedule a separate date according to each of our five calendars.
Okay. So is everyone okay then with deleting the January fourteenth meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Then we are on to the March eleventh or fourth. Now, Mr. Watson, you said you preferred the fourth. Mrs. Grease, I know you preferred the eleventh. But I think everybody else is okay with both or? Did you want to add something?
Well, no, I, I just, I feel like we've let down one of the members whose work schedule could possibly get impacted by this. And we thought we were doing it the right way. And then I'm hearing right now at the dais that it's not. So.
Well, how much of a, what do you call it? A conundrum is it gonna put you into to have the March eleventh meeting? Like, is that gonna bring you down to the wire on layoffs? I mean, that was the reason for putting it.
Yeah, because it's March fifteenth.
Yeah, notices have to be delivered prior to March fifteenth.
If we did a March eleventh meeting, we would have to make that decision at February twenty-fifth.
Yes.
Which is difficult. Correct.
But if we do it on March fourth, then Mrs. Grease is out. Can we schedule it on a Thursday that week? Or is that gonna really piss everybody off?
I'm out of the country that week.
The whole week?
Yeah.
Oh.
Sorry. I can, look, I can miss it. I'm one of four. It's not like, I just don't want to be reprimanded for it.
So we'll go with. Do it on the fourth is so that the layoff notices are timely.
So we'll go with March fourth. Everybody okay with deleting April eighth?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Then we are May thirteenth or sixth. What's the, the conflict there or the, the date pressure? The thirteenth to the sixth?
Final notices have to be delivered by March fifteenth. May fifteenth, sorry, May fifteenth.
So is everybody okay with the sixth?
Everybody good with the sixth?
Sounds good to me.
Everybody good with deleting August twelfth? Or do we want to?
Oh, no, we have to delete that.
Right, but not replace it with a meeting on the fourteenth or replace it with a meeting on the fourteenth?
Do we need a meeting? Like, is there a reason to?
We'll, we'll make it work.
Without it. Okay. So we'll delete that one. September twenty-third.
Twenty-third, twenty-sixth.
September twenty-third?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at August. Sorry. Ten thirty.
Do we want to move the date of that meeting? I mean, it, it's, it's within, it's a week away from a meeting on the thirtieth. I don't know if there's a meeting necessary agenda-wise.
We can take it out.
Yeah, just take it out.
Are we good with taking that one out?
Yeah.
Now, that still gives us two meetings in September.
Okay. And then December sixteenth. As long as we have the meeting done by the twentieth, we're good. We could do it December ninth?
I, I like doing it the ninth.
Anybody have a conflict with that? So I think we'll move that one to the ninth. And that will also won't conflict with first interim. Obviously, we're doing it a little bit early this year, but next year, we're good deadline-wise with first interim?
Should be fine.
Maybe.
We don't know.
Change it on you? Okay. So got all those changes?
Right, and the, and.
Bring that back?
Well, yeah. The, the proposed dates for the special meetings, I think, needs to be discussed. The, the proposed dates for the special meetings, I think, needs to be discussed during Monday's meeting because there are some things for strategic planning and goal setting that I think need to be part of those discussions is some conversations that Mr. Watson and I had during, with Ben during planning. And so I'm just, I think the.
So we will have.
The final, you know, the final evaluation data is there and the school-wide data and that sort of thing. But I think like any governance team strategic planning things, I think those are TBD for right now.
Okay.
Until we meet.
So we'll discuss those on the 25th. Everybody good with that?
Sounds good.
Okay. And then the governance calendar for 2024-2025.
Does it have any major changes?
Anybody have any questions or comments on that? Nothing? Okay, so we're good there. The only thing, the only additional comment that I wanted to make was regarding the comments about the last meeting and the change of the date. My comments were not meant to be to any specific person. It applied to all of board members equally. If I could show you my text with Mr. Watson, it had nothing to do with rescheduling the one meeting. It had to do with the musical chairs that we had been done with all of the meeting dates during the year, which Dr. Hawkins alluded to. I took out the schedule that was approved the prior year and marked all of the ones that were changed. So we could, I could mention what the math was. We changed 14 of 29 meeting dates, which is 48% of all of our meetings, had dates changed from the original ones that were approved in December, which in my experience is quite unprecedented, changing that many meetings, which is why I made the comment and why I think it's important that when we agree on a calendar at the organizational meeting, that we stick to it as much as absolutely possible because that's what we are elected to do. So I will leave it at that.
I think, look, I think the public heard what you said, Mr. Trunkie. I think the insinuation is worse than the actual accusation. And I think what they also didn't see is the emails going back and forth asking for board member attendance. So that is also the context that the public doesn't have as well. So again, the public heard what.
And I didn't mention that.
And your attitude towards me as a woman.
I didn't mention you.
And tonight as a woman as well, so.
Okay, I didn't mention anything about meeting attendance.
You didn't have to. You didn't have to, Mr. Trunkie. The public heard you loud and clear.
Okay, so moving on. The next general function is item B, Approved Resolution 2024-25, Number 36. A resolution of the governing board of the Saugus Union School District declaring an excused absence from a joint meeting of the governing board and the Asset Management Advisory Committee for Patricia Garibay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cooper? Was that a second, Mr. Watson?
Yes, sir.
Second by Mr. Watson. Any discussion or comments? I will call the roll. Ms. Cooper?
Aye.
Aye. Mrs. Garibay? Abstain. Mrs. Grease?
Aye.
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
An a vote aye. The motion passes with a four to zero vote with one abstention. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Garibay, second by Ms. Cooper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is, or excuse me, the motion carries and the meeting is adjourned at 10:36. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all. Good night.